Here we go.
Hi, Gibson.
Yeah, I'm getting the phone apart ready. And call this meeting to order at nine thirty. And start off with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty six and Treaty eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Maydies and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language and culture. Good morning. So I guess we'll look at the approval of the agenda. Any? Any thoughts on that?
I actually have an addition if council will approve access to information. It would be an enclosed session and evaluation. I'm not sure of the number, so I'll have to dig that out.
Okay. Any more? Add-on solutions? Okay. Council Anderson has moved to approve the agenda as amended with the add-on of nine point two.
Access to information.
Access to information. Oh, my Lord. They, I know acronyms. All in favor? Carried. Five and oh. So we'll move on to the, excuse me, approval of the minutes. Any discussion on that? Council Johnson?
No discussion, but if ready to move, I will.
Okay, any discussion on the approval of the minutes? From the June seventeenth committee of the whole meeting. Seeing none, all in favor? Carried, five and oh. So we have item number four. We got three delegations coming in. First one is at ten o'clock, so ten AM specifically. So I guess we will move on to five point one. Page forty-six of your agenda. And go into the, to the C A O update, five point one. And and look at the update from the C A O. Is there any discussion or any questions we have for the C A O? Seeing none, looks like very busy last couple of months. So, and, and we all know that, so. Seeing none, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. C A O for, for the report. One thing I was wondering municipal affairs training. Has that taken up a lot of time to, for this training through municipal affairs or?
Mr. Chairman, there's probably training put on due to changes to legislation, at least a couple hours per month.
Yeah.
Yeah, there just seems to have been an awful lot of changes to legislation in the last little while. Whether it's M G A, but also emergency management and everything else. So even though we, we're supposed to be getting rid of red tape where municipalities are getting handed a lot of red tape, so whether it's that or some other ones where the A T, access to information. And so that's a big change. So we had to take some training on that. So and I had to take a couple of tests. So yeah, it's, it's ongoing. Progress is, is difficult. So a couple, three hours a month. I'll see.
So there was even tests involved.
There was a test.
Oh, my God. All right.
It wasn't the hardest test.
Well, but thank you for taking that because it keeps us on the, on the know of what's happening in the, in the Alberta government. So which is all good. So, uh, okay. Any other questions or comments or? Seeing none, we will move on to five point two. Departmental updates, page forty-seven. Page forty-seven of your agenda. So I guess on that corporate services department update is the first one. So any, any questions, discussion, Councilor Anderson?
Okay, I just want to commend the administration for how much the balances do have changed over the last year. Like, that's an incredible, incredible change. So thank you very much for all the efforts you guys have taken there. And I want to, wanted to highlight that there are eighty-three small business subclass declarations as of now. And that really, I think, is a better reflection of how many small businesses we truly have in our county and the importance of them.
Thank you for that. I guess, I guess one question I have, I know we, we extended the timeline on the small business tax incentive or break. When does that end?
Mr. Chair and members of the committee, that ended on August eleventh. It's expired now.
Okay, okay. No, thank you. Revolve.
Thank you so much. Again, I echo, thank you, what Ashton Anderson had said, Councilor Ashton Anderson. It is impressive what we're seeing on, on these reports. I just had a couple of questions, just for clarity purposes for, for myself. On page forty-eight, under communications, developed an information package for credit card payments of potable truck fill stations. I'm just curious what that entails. Is that for internal or is that for public or?
It's for public. We're working on an information campaign to have at the stations to inform people that updates are coming and it's also going to be on our website and newspaper. We're currently working with utilities and Jackson and whatnot to kind of iron everything out. Awesome. We're in the beginning phases of that.
Oh, that's fantastic. And so would we be running into any sort of issues with internet? Is that going to be a, a concern?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Are we going to run into any issues with connectivity for internet, being able to, for the card readers and that kind of thing?
I, I can't answer that question. I think that's going to be, probably a question for Jackson, I would believe. Okay.
Awesome. All right. Yeah, just thinking about it.
We'll get an answer back to, I think not.
Okay.
But we'll confirm that.
Awesome. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I see, of course, disaster recovery is continuing. And, you know, we did talk about that in the past with regards to a reserve funding to cover some of these costs that don't get covered by D R P. So looking forward to that in the future for sure. And I think with that one, that's all I pretty much highlighted, other than to say again, thank you so much for the great reports. We sure appreciate these.
I guess before we say too much, Gary Cromwell is, Councilor Cromwell has joined us. Good morning, Councilor Cromwell.
Good morning.
Well, um, Counselor Gerlock, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if new system policy for fire on call. Everybody says.
Can you turn your microphone on, Counselor Gerlock?
I certainly can, and I do apologize. Yeah, I just asked the question, it's created a new system policy for fire on call. I was just wondering where we're at with that.
Can you point out on which page that's?
Oh, great. It's on page forty-seven, under.
Oh, that is for payroll and that is part of the module for Dayforce. So it's called the policy. That's the term that Dayforce uses. So that's just the policy to bring on the paid on call firefighters. So it was just an additional module that we had to add on to the electronic payment system for salaries.
So, so they're receiving their on-call payment?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I guess one question, the, the payroll system upgrade with Dayforce, is that going okay? Or is there still some glitches and stuff like that in here?
As far as I know, it's going okay. We, wherever glitches we found where staff identified, we fixed them. Prior to launching it, we actually had a pilot group. Mostly protective services staff and some of the directors where we tested it out. So if there were any glitches found then, they were fixed prior. But as far as I know, it's, it's going well.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, so any other questions for, for the director? Oh. Sir Johnson?
With respect to community grants, when it comes to the cemetery improvement youth assistance grants, are we going to be seeing a new policy coming out with that in the short term here?
Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, yes, we've actually revamped the program, but we have yet to present it to the leadership team. Once we get feedback from the leadership team, our plan is to bring it to, hopefully to the next committee of the whole meeting. That's what our plan is. So trying to bring all of the community grants under one umbrella. That's our intent, just to make it easier for applicants as, and then provide a guideline for online. So when applicants are looking for something, it's, it's much easier to, to find and it's, it's a much more streamlined process.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Counselor Gerlock.
Have there been any thoughts of like for monthly billings, for water billings? Of people just automatically having it? Instead of having to send them a bill every month, that they just automatically pay their accounts. I know with my utility bills, they could just get paid automatically and left with through that hassle. Because I, I know some people have just inadvertently missed the payment and then all right away within the few days they get a reminder letter and it seems like that's not a lot of vigilance that has to happen.
We, to the, through the, through the chair, we will work with our financial institution to look at that currently. And you'll see in your binder or in your package, we'll be talking about the E F T process. So we're in, we're really trying to enhance and make it easier for people to pay their bills. Quite often people prepay their bills as well, so they don't, they don't get caught up with any expenses that are incurred.
Great. I guess one question that's brought up in my mind is, is are we, can we pay by credit card at these locations yet or? Or, or not?
This chairman at the truck fields?
Yeah.
No, it's not active yet.
Oh, okay.
That's a few things to figure out. And then actually I got an update on it yesterday and then the hardware will be installed. Just some backend software and some things. And then we purchased everything and got it ready to install and then that'll be the last step.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. That'll be a great add-on to the convenience of paying the, paying the bills instead of having to send the letters out. So okay, so, oh, Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you very much. C A O, you mentioned you have the hardware purchased. What is the kind of rough timetable for installation and are they all going to be done kind of around the same time?
I did not get that ETA yesterday. I will find out and I will report back to all of council.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that's all the questions at the, at the director and great report. Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to the next department, which would be Director of Community and Protective Services. Any discussion there regarding? Regarding, oh, Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, I just want to note, I think it's really excellent to see within enforcement services actively working on unsightly properties. Great job by all.
Yep, perfect. Revolve.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of questions. As I was going through the report, it's great that there is one tax forfeiture property that's been sold. Two more it mentions are advertised for sale. Where are they being advertised?
I believe on our website and I thought we had put it in the paper for a bit as well.
Okay.
But social media mostly.
Okay, I, I did quick run through quickly on the website, but I couldn't find it. Is it more like in featured news or?
I'm looking right now.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, just, just something to, and, and those are the ones, are we able to mention which location those are in?
I think they're, they're both in Rochester.
Both in Rochester. Okay, thank you. It mentions also on, on page fifty-three, under land management, working with consultants on a new area structure plan and preparing for the public hearing. Is the area structure plan changed from the original presentation at the open house? Or are we able to talk about that here?
Well, first reading has been done. And so there hasn't been a change since first reading, I don't think.
Okay.
I believe, I believe it was cleaned up a little bit since the public open house, but not, not appreciable changes.
Okay. Thank you. And also great news to hear that we've received the notification that the application for the regional fire smart coordinator grant was successful. So that's fantastic. And looking forward to, to hearing more about that. Just going through a few things. I think that was, yeah, that's all. Thank you so very much.
I just have one more.
Yep. Is it this one that, yes, it is. New home stats in the county. We're going through that housing assessment through the grant and that kind of thing. And, and just curious if there's a way that we might be able to get the stats on the new homes for twenty twenty-five that have been added to our county.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
Well, we usually do an annual.
Okay.
Yeah, so. We can report that.
That'd be amazing. Appreciate that. Thank you so very much.
Any other questions from? Looks like on our subdivision and development permits and, and stuff like that is really, really growing, really growing great in Athabasca County. That's, that is awesome to see. So seeing none? No other questions? Thank you very much. What's in for you? A great report. We will move on now to page sixty-seven. Director Infrastructure Services, Mr. Morton. Put you on the hot seat here. So do we have any, yeah. Do we have any questions for, for the director? Counselor Johnson?
Good morning. Um, on the first page there, the fourth bullet point down, the welcome signs, does that include the foam core signs? No? Okay.
The foam core sign that I believe you're asking about is the one that's going to be south on sixty-three. Like it was ordered back in May, I believe, and they had indicated that it should be here in August, but we haven't heard any word yet.
That's fair. I only have one other question. On page sixty-eight, the R F Q issued for the two projects. Is there a project end date or when that will be coming in? Near the bottom of the page, the third bullet point up.
I, sorry, I don't have that answer at the time. Jamie's off today, but I can get that. So you're looking for project completion date?
Yeah, just wondering when that's going to be taking place, whenever. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Gerlock.
Morning, Marshall.
Morning.
It, it said here, they depleted two of the gravel stockpiles. What's our gravel? That is our situation. So we will be discussing fairly soon with council. You know, a new plan on how we're going to secure some gravel for the next three years. And during budget, you'll see some options, I guess, to move forward with trying to obtain additional gravel supply. But right now we're sitting a little low for sure. Yeah, thanks.
Counselor Johnson?
One last question. On agricultural services, the third bullet point up, I just want to ensure that communications is sent to E P C and Boyle School. It really complements the green certificate program that they offer there for the agricultural brewery.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. On page seventy-one of the agenda package, I was wondering about Hamlet cleanup program. I know in previous years it had been oversubscribed, just kind of wondering what the uptake was this year. If we filled all the spots that were available, kind of how that went?
Yeah, I, I know that they definitely had some applicants, but I don't know if it was oversubscribed or not. I'll have to ask Whitney how that went. I know Public Works did some of it, but I don't know if that was in addition to. Or but I'll check with Whitney and find out.
Thank you. I was also wondering about the Golden Knodding Tennis Court. It says that it's being assessed for removal or demo. Is that under a lease agreement or is that something that the county currently has? Like on our?
Um, I'm not sure if that one actually falls under the lease side. I think that's kind of what we've been trying to get to is the lease option there. And we haven't been able to enter into a lease agreement. So I believe it's sitting on our lands, but you know, I'll have to chat with Jamie about that one. She was looking after that.
Okay, so will more information on that project be coming forward to council?
You, sorry?
Will more information about that project be coming to council? Thank you. And I also had a question about the Amis Clay boat launch. It's my understanding that some repair work was done there. I'm just wondering if it's complete, how it went?
So that's the one where we went out and we did a survey to see what the topography was off the end, see boats were catching at the end. And it, they did identify that maybe the best option would be to extend boat launch even further. And they were going to start that work, but I'm not sure if it's been completed yet or not.
I'd like an update on that one. If possible, just, it was my understanding that a contractor had been hired for that project, but I don't think council ever heard anything official about what was happening or when it was happening. So, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Revolve.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the report as well. Again, kudos to everyone for, for the reports that are put in because this information is so valuable, not only for us, but for, for the public. And so I've got a few questions though, just the very first page on our big spread gravel program. There's, I'm hearing a lot of really good things out there. Residents are extremely happy to see the gravel that's been laid and, and pretty excited about that. So, you know, pass on our, our thank yous and their thank yous. Is there an estimated completion date on the program?
I knew you were gonna say. It really is dependent on how many trucks we have. And currently we're doing much better. I think we're sitting around eleven trucks right now, including our own. We were up to thirteen one day, but we have been as low as four or five. So it's been a bit of a struggle, lots of breakdowns. You know, yeah, we're, I don't really have a completion date for you. I believe we're finished in division five now or really close. But you know, it's, it's dragging on. So it's probably it's probably at least another month.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I understand the problems for sure. And I sympathize because it's not easy and the phone calls start ringing and all of those things happening, right? So, no, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. The purchasing of the gravel, was there any, that's the second bullet point. Is there major budget implications for that?
Uh, no, it's, we've purchased from them, the gravel from the stockpiles.
Okay.
So the rate is the same. So it's, it won't have a significant.
Okay, fantastic. Back to the signs. And just a quick question, I can't remember in our budget, was a foam core sign budgeted for highway eight thirteen. It wasn't.
The only, the only foam core sign that I had in budget was for highway, highway sixty-three coming northbound.
Okay, maybe something we can look at. It's, the M D has beautiful new signs. It's gorgeous. And of course ours across the highway are looking a little behind time. So yeah, something we can look at for budget coming up if we're so lucky to be here again. Mentions also the Collington Derelict property and Laura McNabb has been cleaned up. I've been by there, of course, doing trail work. It looks fantastic. It's getting a lot of attention. So yeah, looking forward to seeing more on that one.
I think, hang on there, revolve. I think Director wanted to say so.
Just clarification on the eight thirteen foam core side. Which location is that northbound or south?
That would be.
Bound into the, into the county.
Into the county from the M D. But is it on the north? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it's on the southbound, southbound lane. And they do have beautiful signs. They just actually put up here this year.
They're gorgeous. Yeah, they look really nice. Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
You bet. No worries. Thank you. There are a few other, of course, issues up the road that people have been talking about just for your awareness. So it's, I've had a few phone calls on that of late because of the, the work that's gone on down in the area. People are asking if it will extend. So to the other areas that are further up the road on the north of that particular property in Carlton that was just cleaned up. So yeah, just throwing it out there for your awareness that phone calls are coming in on, on those other properties. Let's see. This is a bridge maintenance repairs. Oh, that's right. Bridges on page sixty-eight. It mentions we currently have nine bridges in various states of repair scheduled for maintenance this year. Are we able to get the locations of those bridges, please, just for our knowledge?
Can do.
Please, and thank you. And as well as the Bridge Culvert that was awarded to Prairie North Construction. Rough start date for mid-September, a location on that one too would be great, please.
Can, can I give you that location right now?
Sure.
That's right by Cotchers and Division seven. Range Road one eighty-one, one eighty-three. You know, yeah.
Awesome.
It's been, it's been in dire straits of being replaced for years.
Gotcha. No, appreciate that. R F Qs were mentioned on page sixty-eight for issued, received proposals and awarded for two projects from B C A work requiring engineering studies. So Wandering River Fire Hall structural and geotechnical issues and the ventilation of three bays in Wandering River Grassland Public Workshop. Is there a way to get a bit more information on what the structural and geotechnical issues entail at the Wandering River Fire Hall?
Uh, yeah, we can bring that back. Think that we went through the B C As before, but we can bring that back.
Just for, yeah, clarity purposes, I guess, and memory would be great. Or appoint me in the direction, I guess, of where to find it. That would be great. I think it's in an agenda package from a while back, but yeah, just from update there. And it also, I noticed in the wastewater aspect on page seventeen, and I know we're getting close to ten o'clock, so I'll try and hurry up here. Multiple clogs in the Wandering River lift station and of course the laundry list of items that were found in there. Is there any way to get more communication out to people? You know, like, how are we handling some of those things?
Yeah, I think there's all kinds of signage and everything that's out. I mean, obviously it's not residents, right? They, they're a lot more diligent, but yeah, I don't know what else we can do. I guess we could put out some work. Some more information, but uh I think everybody kind of knows what those items. Do to systems. They choose to not care, but.
To ignore that, yeah. It it's difficult, as it does add to the bill, right? As as we all know. I have a few more things, but I don't know if you want to.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, maybe we should, uh, cause, cause I have a few questions too, so. And I think Counselor Gerlock has a few questions, so this is gonna be an ongoing, ongoing for a while. We don't want to let Mr. Morton out of the hot seat yet. So we'll put a, we'll put a hold on on our uh. Department updates and we will go to the delegation if we want to take a break for real quick, like a couple minutes break. No, I really do, and uh and then we'll start on this delegation. Okay, we'll uh reconvene the uh meeting here with. With our first delegation. And it's on uh four point one. It's on page nine of your of your agenda. Authentic uh regarding the Boyle Fish Pond, and uh. I'll go around and uh ask everybody to introduce themselves. So, starting with Counselor Gerlock.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, representing Division One, the Rochester Prairie Valerian.
Good morning, and thank you, welcome for, thank you for being here and welcome. I'm Tracy Holland, uh Councilor of Division Five, which is east of Athabasca, as well as Reed for the county.
Kelly Chamsik, Division Seven Grassland Atmore Prospeda Areas.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle Casin area.
Go ahead, uh Counselor Cromwell.
Good morning, Gary Cromwell, Division Six, the far north up to and including Wandering River.
Cute, and good morning, uh Rob Minz, Division Eight. Um Baptiste Lake Island Lake area, and then around the, around the room, we have uh Jordan Schinkelberg. I guess Communications Coordinator, right? Ms. Leah Blair, uh uh Recording Secretary. I think you know Mr. Beck. And Mr. Morton, I'm Director of Infrastructure, I think you know him. Krista Wilkinson, Community and Protective Services Director. And uh behind you is Cole, Cole Brennan with the uh Town and Country Paper. So, uh good morning and looking very forward to your having a discussion with us. Thank you.
Well, thanks to you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Appreciate the invite to your community. I'm uh working with administration on uh. We're up so some work at the Boyle Fish Pond. Objective wise, what we're trying to achieve, first, we want to get a good understanding of the site. Uh I actually had a cabin on Skeleton Lake for seventeen years, spent a lot of time. Uh with kids and whatnot at the pond, so you know, had used it for a number of years. Uh so got, became familiar with it on that basis. Uh we we want to think about potential and future uses. This is not a redesign project, but we still want to understand what is the potential of the fish pond. Primarily, this is a stakeholder engagement program, uh so we want to have a a very robust process that is inviting, comfortable for for user groups, key stakeholders in the public to participate. And uh ensure that we're gathering their feedback so that council can then make some meaningful decisions as we move forward on this project. We want to look at some of the servicing limitations uh that there may be, and and what are some of the impediments uh with the site that might be hindering uh usage and and and. Future use. Uh lastly, uh just through the engagement, coming forward with a recommendation to see if it's in your best interest to continue on with a fish pond. Uh with your, your disposition with the province or uh any alternative scenario. So the history of the site, initially it was leased by uh your Boylan District uh Senior Citizens Association, and then in nineteen eighty-two, that disposition was assigned to Athabasca County. In the disposition, very clearly, your intended or permitted uses uh includes a public rest area, picnic site, a pier. Parking area, and outdoor toilet. So if you decided to add additional uses, there would have to be an amendment to that lease agreement with the province. Right now, uh you're at the very end of the uh twenty-five-year recreational lease, and that expires in October twenty-twenty-seven. So you have a bit of time to make decisions on this, and and that's the intent of of getting ahead of this with this assignment. As for the site itself, uh this just shows some images of the site, uh fairly basic amenities that are there. Uh the the county has not put. Uh major investment, uh or very little investment uh over the last number of years. It includes primarily a washroom, seems to be the the favorite uh amenity there. A lot of people do stop by. To use that, that are just passing by, not necessarily using the site. One thing I will uh point out on this image, there is a. Uh the lease boundaries are shown, uh which includes mostly the northern third of the amenities. Everything above that text box is your lease limits. So we actually have extended past your uh legal uh confines of that recreational lease, so if you do renew it, there'll have to be a. Another survey to capture everything to the south at uh the the service road, as well as the washroom and that parking area. The stakeholder outreach, uh so we started off with meetings with administration, so we've met with them on site, uh certainly internal meetings. Uh to set the stage for this project. Uh this is our first kickoff, uh initial meeting with council. Uh we intended on doing this earlier in the year, but you have pretty packed agendas, so I appreciate the opportunity to finally get onto a committee of the whole agenda. Uh more just to introduce the project and get some perspective from council before we dive into this. Uh we then are gonna have key stakeholder interviews that involves uh phone calls, emails, uh and exchanges with key stakeholders that I'll I'll list off shortly. We're then gonna have a bit of a workshop to gather those key stakeholders collectively together to have discussions on their views, their perspectives. Uh a public open house that'll be hosted likely in Boyle, just because of proximity. And then providing a what we heard report that captures what we heard from everything from council to key stakeholder interviews uh to the public open house. Those stakeholders that we've identified includes obviously administration, uh the Alberta Conservation Association, they've been a partner for many years uh with stalking the pond. So actively involved with the the uh the site. Alberta Transportation, obviously, it's along their corridor. They have interest in people. Doing anything alongside uh their corridors. The district, uh Boyle District Senior Citizens Association, they do have an annual event that they they still plan. Uh out there, so they are probably your primary active user of the site, and and uh coincidentally, you're the originating. Uh party that started that project many years ago. The RCMP uh as well as Bylaw, just from, so we can understand some of the challenges uh from enforcement, from. Uh monitoring policing incidents that happen there. The Village of Oil, of course, because of the proximity uh and their likely interest in the site. And lastly, the Athabasca River Runners Snowmobile Association that may, you know, potentially use the site uh, you know, during winter events and and whatnot. As for uh the project schedule, again, we were, we, this was conceived back in May. We're starting this uh process now here in August. We're gonna be doing the stakeholder interviews starting this week, uh after we meet with council. Uh the stakeholder workshop will be starting uh in September. Uh draft recommendations and an open house in October. We are mindful of the election, uh so we're we're seeking some advice from council here on. Whether we accelerate and have the entire project done prior to the election, which we're comfortable to do, uh or if we want to slow play that and and maybe do engagement after. Uh so again, part of our our discussion we're gonna have, and then lastly, a final report. There are some potential alternatives, and and these are probably the six likely scenarios that we'll be testing. Uh the first is let the lease lapse. Uh you'll then have an obligation to remove everything that's on the site and come to some terms with. Uh the province on what they would like to see uh the site left as, whether it's reclaim everything, uh walk away. Uh but that's yet to be determined. Secondly, transferring the lease to another entity and walk away. Maybe we find another group, and that's part of the engagement is. To identify, maybe there's a group that'll just take it on wholesale, they manage it and run it. Uh number three, transfer that lease, but then develop some sort of a partnership, maybe financial, working kind. Uh you know, some contribution from the county uh that you can collaborate, but the the lease itself would then be in the name of another entity. The fourth option is renewing the lease, uh stay as the as the lease holder, but then find partners as uh to to maybe do some. Component, whether it's programming or operations or or work in kind or seeking uh grants. Oftentimes, community groups can access grants. That the county can't, uh so there is some benefit of of bringing uh some stakeholders uh onboard for for initiatives like this. Number five is renewing the lease, leave it the way it is, uh status quo, and and just keep the washroom clean and and keep the site safe. Lastly, to renew the lease and then look at some redevelopment. And and through this engagement, again, this is not a redesigned project, but we are gonna learn about. Well, what could we have there uh that could maybe enhance or increase the use, uh if that is the goal? So with the, why are we here today? Uh you know, we want to hear if there's any, you know, early on gut feelings uh from council of on where this project may go. Uh are there any other key stakeholders that are not on that list that you think we should be involving in this process? Are there any options that are just not on the table? Uh potentially, you may say, you know what, we're, we would never get uh e- expect another organization to take it on, so. Passing the lease on to somebody else is just not one of the six options. And lastly, uh the last uh point of discussion is uh to do with just the timing of of the project. Uh again, we are comfortable to complete this in advance of October twentieth, uh and complete the engagement. Uh it would compress things a little bit, but at the end of the day, we want to work with. Uh you know, the the conditions that we have, or again, if we want to defer that and maybe let the new council, uh uh whoever that may be. Receive it and and move forward and and create an action plan, that's to your discretion. So I'll take any comments, questions, and happy to address concerns.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um I'm, there, there is some discussion that that council may wanna. Throw some input in, and I'm sure administration wants to see us have a discussion, so. Reeve Hall.
Thank you. Um just going back to your question on uh key stakeholders. Um I'm just looking through it, and I just thought maybe the summer villages that are bordering uh the village might be interested as well. I'm not sure if they're. Um using the the fish pond. Um I know it's an important uh rest stop as well for folks that are traveling from north. And and heading down, although I don't know necessarily if they're stakeholders, but um I would imagine it'll attract some attention there as well for for uh everyone. Anyway, thank you so much for this report. It's extremely informative. Um really appreciate um the information that you've provided and and understanding, of course, the DLO with the province. And uh when you mentioned we're outside of our um lease boundary now, is that going to be a concern during this process? At all with the province, or they're, they're okay with? Uh where we're at with that? I I guess I'm concerned about that a little bit.
Yeah, and through the chair, the uh we haven't had outreach directly with uh the province on. How we've kind of crept over time. I I I defer that to administration to see if there's been any discussion, obviously. To build that extent of of driveway, of of lane, of parking area, dropping a washroom, there hopefully was some discussion. Uh but of course, we're gonna have to make good uh when the the lease expires and when there's the renewal, uh so it'll just be a matter of a new survey. Uh the actual use still fits within the current lease uh confines of of what the permitted uses are. So it's just more the the physical area that's changed.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. No, I appreciate that. Um looking forward to to the open houses and and uh. Listening to what everyone has to say about that. Thank you so much.
Counselor Chamsik.
Um with that, um when you're talking about the key stakeholders, um have you reached out to any community organizations or to associations? Uh you know, in in around Skeleton Lake, that type of thing?
Yeah, and through the chair, we've uh not started that engagement process yet. Uh the list that you see, I know on the previous slide. Is our first crack at it. Certainly open to suggestions, uh more of the merrier. We have no problem adding, you know, another dozen people if if. So uh if if seen, you know, by council and administration, so uh at this point, uh hasn't been part of the 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 list that we've included, but. Again, happy to include them if we get the contacts.
Just on Sunday, I was driving past there, and I was surprised to see how many people were out there fishing and picnicking on the lawn, and it was uh. A nice sight to see, and I'm looking forward to the open house as well. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. Just wondering what your communication strategy is for the open house and. Kind of how many people you're hoping to see there.
Yeah, through the chair, you counselor, the, we've perver- uh prepared a engagement strategy, uh and I'd ask administration if. They're comfortable to pass that to council. It outlines the strategies, the the tactics we're gonna be using. This is a, it'll be a traditional open house with stand-up panels. Uh likely uh a couple of facilitators from my team, as well as administration, uh soliciting feedback. We also have. We'll be launching an online survey that'll go out a week before, a week after, or potentially two weeks after, depending on the timeline. Uh that'll be advertised through your corporate website as well as uh social media. So that'll be available for all area residents, uh certainly countywide and outside of the county for that matter. Uh so that's the outreach with the data collection. As for the event, you know, traditional open house, ideally, we can be out on site if the weather looks favorable. It's always nice to be able to throw up a tent, but we'll find that he. You you won't get as many people willing to, they'd rather walk to the co-op than uh go to the site itself. Again, we're just gonna. We're gonna, we're gonna gauge it closer to the period whether we think we need to do two events, maybe one in the afternoon on site, uh one in the evening uh within one of the communities in in Boyle. To be determined, uh but tactic wise, traditional open house, ideally, uh we see fifty people. That would be excellent. Um for a project of this nature, and considering the size of the community, uh that would be a a high number of of attendees, I would say.
Good. Okay, well, that sounds very exciting for for the uh. Open house and that uh Counselor Gerlock, you got any question? No? Uh Counselor Cromwell, do you have any? Questions or anything? Seeing none. Uh yeah, I'm looking very forward to uh actually the open house myself, just to see what's uh. What the feedback's gonna be from from the uh area residents and and people using it and and what they feel about the fish pond. It's been there for a long time. So to to walk in there and say, no, we're we're done, we're out of here, is the wrong, wrong way to go, but uh. At least get some good feedback and 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 a better understanding on 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 how. How we should possibly move forward on it will be, will be exciting, so. You betcha, so. I don't know if there's anything else you're looking. I don't know if there's anything else you're looking from.
The timing, so whether or not we want to deal with that within our our council or kick the can down the road through the new council. And so it's a little bit of how the council feels about dealing with this. Go ahead, I'm just just sorry, I'm just.
Yeah, no, that's.
So Jerry, yeah, I'll be all way in here, and I think it's one of those things, exactly, it's over forty years old. It's one of those things that, you know, as much as I would love to deal this to just because, you know, we are involved. I would like to make sure that all residences and stakeholders' voices are fairly heard. On it as well, so I mean, that would depend on your timing and, you know, what you feel would be acceptable, but I mean. Kind of here and there on being able to wait if that's what is needed, then then I suggest that's what we do.
So I guess in the long run, do we want to think about the timing or do we want to say right now what what? Timing is, or or do we want to, do we want to make this decision? Okay, Counselor Anderson?
I think trying to drag it out and wait till middle of winter to do public engagement on a fish pond. Is probably not the way to go, I think. If you can do it in the fall, if possible, it's, you know, most people still have. Memories of using it in the summer, or they've had the opportunity to go out and look at what's there before it's covered in snow or before it's frozen, that kind of stuff, so. I don't like the idea of fast tracking it, but at the same time, I do think that the timing is important. Because it's more of a seasonal use spot.
The. Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. I agree that it should be done. Relatively soon. This idea that's been put around on more than one occasion of just putting it off for the next council, for the next council is not appropriate to our our station. Nor is it fair to the ratepayers. For the job that they have asked us to do, we're not here to work up until six months before the end of our term. And I do agree with the comments of. Well, it's in people's minds when they want to go out, when they want to look at it, when they have their memories. I think Counselor Anderson nailed it on that part. So I definitely agree with that assumption and would like to see it done. Quickly if they can get it done.
I guess the biggest thing with the timing, if I could cut in there, is it's not only for the open house and and the the. Meeting with this key stakeholders, it's also with the timing of 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 the decision. I think you're you're trying to. Maybe get out of council right now is that, do we want to make a decision? On this before? Before the election, or do we want to put it to the next council after the election? I think that's the the key ask there too, right? Am I wrong?
Yeah, to you, Mr. Chairman, that that's correct. The engagement's going to happen in September regardless, so that will, you know, be complete. It's just then a question of. Making the decision, the decisions may be everything from what are we doing with the lease? You have twenty four months to to make that decision. So there's no rush on that. Will there be a short term investment and your your capital budget for twenty twenty six? Another question that likely it'll be the the next council that would be looking at your capital for next year. So making the decision itself, we're not, there's no pressure there. It's just, again, whether this council wants to receive it and and accept it as information. Or if they want to defer it, but again, the engagement would be complete in the short term.
Okay, yeah, and I agree with that. Get the information and then then we'll make a decision at that point in time of whether we move it forward quick or or if we. Move it to the next council, so, okay? But yeah, no, it sounds like everybody's in agreement to. The 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 scope of the of the of the project and everything and 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 get the open house going, so, perfect. You betcha. Thank you very much for for. Coming and joining us today and and giving us a a look into this and it's great information to have, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Okay, maybe we should take a ten minute recess. And we'll come back at. Twenty twenty five to eleven. And be able. Okay, she's ten thirty five here, back from a break, and it looks like to me like Counselor Hall has joined us. And Counselor Cromwell is not there, so, okay? Just to keep things going. Good morning, Counselor Hall.
Morning.
And so we will go back to. Five point two department updates, it'll be. What page is that? Sixty seven, I think. Sixty seven Infrastructure Services Department update. For continuing discussion on on this, so. Reeve Holland, you got?
Thank you so much. I'll try not to take up too much more of your time. Just curious about page seventy. The cleaning remediation complete for the Colleton Storage and Post Office sewer backup. Schedule of loss form requires completion. Is that is that a substantial claim or just an average? I would say, you know, dealing with the sewer backup.
I I would, I don't know what the total value is yet. There was some equipment and stuff lost as well, so. It it's more than just. Your typical one, but I don't think it's significant with the equipment. But I don't know what the total. Value is at this point.
Okay, all right, and the the equipment is county equipment, not?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's unfortunate for sure. The airport also had a had an issue with a with a sewer backup into the hangar. Is that something that has also been remedied and? Not too substantial as well? Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. The greater analysis for the twenty twenty four program to determine frequency of each road. Is that a presentation coming to council?
I guess it could, kind of, we've done it internally. Where we've tasked our GIS with kind of creating. Like a heat map that kind of shows. You know, which roads are seeing the most maintenance and ones that are seeing very little. We're trying to use that as a a tool to improve the level of service throughout. To ensure that roads that are getting very little. Are at least assessed to see if they require more, and in a lot of cases, you know, it might be. Maybe just a cottage or something down at the end of the road, and maybe it doesn't require any additional maintenance. But at least it gives us a tool to. Provide us direction to go assess and see if it's something that we need to look at, so.
That's awesome.
We have a pretty cool. Map that she's created that kind of shows like a heat map that shows. You know, which roads are getting, and it just changes by color. Which roads are getting a significant amount of maintenance and ones that are getting very little.
Okay, and there could be different varying factors why they're getting maintenance, right? Whether the road needs a better build, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, it could be, could be steep hill that's.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, so varying means, that's awesome, that I I think that's a a really cool thing to hear about. And would love to see more information if it's possible to bring it to council, that would be amazing, fantastic. Located in repair to water main break in Colleton. And then assisted the ARWSC in finding and repairing the water main break that occurred on July twenty fifth and twenty sixth. Is that the same? Breakers, it's a different one.
That's a different one. So the first one is ours.
Okay.
In the distribution system.
Okay.
And the second one would have been the commission's line that we just assisted in trying to isolate or locate the the leak.
And that would have been the one that created the. Caution to go out to conserve water. Correct. Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that properly. And we already talked about boat launches. And it says assess boat launches on page seventy one and prepare for maintenance required repairs expected in August, September at multiple boat launches. How many would that be is multiple?
We'll let you know after the assessments are done.
Okay, yeah, because I, what is the number on the?
Worst case scenario, nineteen.
Nineteen, that's that, that's how many we have, correct? All right, I was just going to ask that, so that's perfect. Thank you so very much. Oh, and the very last page for agricultural services, did we hear any more about the grasshopper? Did we hear any more about the grasshopper survey by any chance? I know Ryan's not here.
I'm not sure if it's complete.
Okay.
But I know it was underway.
That is of interest for sure. And just a minor request for the agendas in the minutes for agricultural services. If we could have them updated onto the website would be amazing. I do point people in that direction and then I got a phone call back saying they're not there. So I appreciate that. Thank you so very much.
Okay. Other, looks like we've lost both of them councillors on Zoom. Any other questions? I guess I got a couple here. Getting back to page sixty-seven, big spread gravel. More trucks. What, what, what have we done to try to bring more trucks on? Have we, have we went out outside of county now?
We have. We've had, we've brought some in from Westlock.
Oh, okay, from Westlock and that, okay. No, that sounds good. If that's what we gotta do, that's what we gotta do, right? Has there been any forethought? Or have you guys discussed anything about possibly rental and that in the summers of?
For additional trucks for in-house?
Yeah.
We haven't put, like, it's definitely an option, but we would have to attract drivers and stuff, right? So it would be, there's no reason for a long-term plan that that couldn't work. But it wouldn't be something that would be a quick fix because you have to try to track drivers. Getting the trucks, I don't think would be a concern. We rent one now, right?
Right.
But we will be looking at trying to improve our registration program or process, sorry. We're gonna look at trying to have registration early in the year and create a process that, you know, is a little less onerous for on the, right at the beginning of the program. To me, I don't know why we wouldn't just do it in January or February instead of week to just before the program, so.
And Mr. Chairman, we'll probably bring back a discussion item on that and the policies that affect that program. Because there are policies that will tie our hands a little bit and yeah, I don't see those constraints in some other counties that their main objective is to get the haul done as quickly as possible for as efficiently as possible. And our hands are a little tied with by current policy, so we'd like to discuss that.
Yeah, and I totally agree with you regarding these policies and that. Because when them policies were instated, we had trucks coming out of our, out of the woodwork, right? And I remember hauling with twenty trucks and having a five thousand dollar quota and, and fighting over who is number one and, and stuff like that. And now we're down to, now we're down to begging people to come on and, and, and all that stuff, I know. And I'll take you back. I'd come up with a plan about six years ago to start implementing, getting more trucks and pass that by administration. So it's really in my mind to, to start looking at actually bringing on renting trucks and trailers for the summer and having our own spread going because because the old, the, the, the old truck drivers and, and stuff like that are just not there. You know, and, and, and that, and it's, and it's getting tougher and tougher, so. Okay, no, that sounds good. At least the discussion is going and, and, and that. And, and, and we'll have a, have a presentation here, here later on. That's good. The other thing is a gravel plan. I know, I know that through council we passed a a resolution to get a asphalt plan going and, and for ten years and for five years or ten years and trying to figure out where we're gonna put asphalt and all this stuff. But we used to have a gravel program that we would, we knew where gravel was coming out of every pit per year. And, and involved in that was crushing and, and all this stuff. And about, again, probably about six years ago, I could see it sort of floundering and going away to, to the point now where we've run out of gravel in two pits. Our main pit coming out of Long Lake is now being hauled all the way to Division Eight. And, and we do have gravel in Division One that is just isn't crushed yet. And, and there's no crushing even in talked about yet. And, and stuff like that. So it's, so it's a real, real, and, and it's a real cron my side to, to, to be looking at purchasing gravel from a, from a contractor that do we not have to go through a purchasing thing with them to, to see who else could maybe provide gravel for us? Or can we just buy straight out from that contractor?
The last time you purchased gravel, you did do that. So they kind of, we've kind of used this as a continuation of that successful bidder because he maintained his rate. So what did go out to bid? And so the last time that it was tendered, it was done, you know, through a competitive process. This supplier was the one that was the successful supplier. And so he, they maintained the rate for us to just go get it today. I can tell you that the current administration shares your concerns with gravel supply. We will be having, actually, we might have to have a discussion fairly soon about getting another contract out for gravel supply. Until we have additional gravel pits identified and secured that we own, because I believe we should have as many as we have, should, can. We will have to utilize third-party supply. So we would be looking at going to that, to a tender, open competition for that for a three-year term with an option to extend for two is what we're looking at. And we will have to get a crushing contract out right away. We have, we have ideas of what we need to do to, and we really need to invest in trying to identify where there is gravel within the municipality. And see if we can acquire it. And we're looking at additional stockpile locations. The one thing that we've already done is we've had our GIS lady create a radius from each stockpile site. I, I was hoping to get to fifteen miles, but it's likely going to be twenty to cover the entire county. If I had a stockpile site in grassland and one out by Island Lake, I can get to a point where I don't need to hire haul more than twenty miles.
Mr. Chairman, just, we could keep going on gravel all day. We're bringing something back where it was already in the works. Whether it's the tail end of this council's term or the next council. You're getting something on gravel.
Yeah, okay, no, that's good. That's good. That's very good to hear because it was really starting to eat away at me regarding this gravel. Where we're going and everything and, and and that's, that's, that, that'll be up for discussion, right? I guess the other thing I was wondering, I, I, one day I happened to run into the checker and, and that on the road. As I was driving by, I noticed there was two people in the truck. I had hard enough time finding one. What, what's the two people in the checking truck doing? Why, why would we have two people in there?
Were they, sorry, I, I'm not sure about that. That might have been a training session. So what we're doing with our checking is we're doing it all digitally on an app. And so it comes back to by the, my dashboard for the GIS. Every time the load is spread, where it came from, what type of gravel it was and how much went down on each road segment. And then we can monitor it that way. So that's how we're doing the checking now. So it might have been a transition or but as far as I know, we're not having two people checking all the time. But we have used a few different individuals. So it might have been a day where they were training them on the use of the app and stuff.
Okay, okay, if that's good and boat, actually going back to page seventy-one, boat launches and that. Has there been any forward thinking about using something different for boat launches for the cement accesses instead of using the little cement, I call them kind of like curb stops. With a little information there, I've been going to a lot of different boat launches in, in other municipalities and that. And they use, they use bigger, bigger cement chunks that don't move as easy as, as those other ones. And, and they're not put together with, with chains and, and clevises and stuff like that. They're one big chunk. It takes a little bit more to, to put in there, but, but I do have pictures of some of them that, it's just something that instead of trying to put these little curb stops in that I call them and join them together and then filling in the middle with gravel. One long chunk of cement would be, to me, is, is way more efficient than that. So I was just wondering if there was any more, if, if there's some forward thinking there regarding using that.
I went really long on the gravel one, so I'll be short on this one. No.
Okay.
At this point, we have not looked at changing that yet. It's something that we haven't got to yet.
Yeah, okay, well, it's something to, to keep, keep in your, your forethought. From my, my thinking is to look at changing out, doing a different design for our boat launches that may last longer and that. Real good place to go. Look at this as an empty of opportunity in around Calling Lake. They have some amazing boat launches there, so. So, yeah. And you think other than that, that's about all the questions I have. Councillor Gerlach, I think you have some.
Unlike my colleagues, I'll be quick. An update on the, the, the what is that, Fibre Mat, Fibre Mat in Perryville? There was kind of a commitment from the previous director that that would be gone. Is that under works or?
Through the chair, I, yes.
Right now it's an option of picking the smaller potholes to avoid the bigger potholes.
Staff have it's on their, their list of things to do and I, I might have been that problem. I didn't, I was reluctant to see it all gone, but that's the plan is for it will disappear. I was hoping to find an option that I might be able to save it, but I'm not sure I can.
Anything that fills the pothole. And speaking of that, there's two real bad potholes in Rochester that are deep. Okay, and if you happen to be waving at your neighbor and not watching the road, you realize they're there. Get, I mean, they're big enough that you can see them, but. And the third thing is the Casland Rochester Waterline Projects Draft Received and Reviewed Common Sent. Is there more to that or, or like?
I'm sorry, which page is that?
It's, pardon me, sixty-eight. Is there, it said drafts received and reviewed.
Oh, so I think this is that project they were working on to review, maybe whether feasibility study. So that means she's done a administrative review of the draft and provided feedback to the engineers on their draft agreement.
I just didn't understand what it was.
Yeah.
I don't have a question. I'm just thrilled to hear you're using apps for these types of things and the technology that's out there. But are you having issue with connectivity in some areas when dealing with those apps? We're merely trying to highlight the cell, cellphone issues that we have in this community.
So it's great to use the apps and collect the data and the information. But we definitely have to wait. I don't get it real time. I have to wait till they get back to the office and it gets downloaded and updated here. So we're getting it every twenty-four hours. We're not getting it live like we could be.
Right, okay. More work to do on cellphone service. Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you very much for, for this report and everything. And if you weren't too hard on you, but see you none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I guess from here, we will move on to five point three councillor updates. Seems five, but this should go pretty quick. We can, might even be able to hit this before eleven o'clock. Our next delegation is eleven AM. Is that through Zoom or? No, they're here. They're in person. Okay, perfect. Who want to start that? Councillor, okay, if you want, sure.
Since our last committee, the whole besides regular county council meeting, committee meetings, not a lot of them happening, not many committees meet during the summer months. During that time, I've been blessed to present a fiftieth anniversary plaque to a local resident. Helped with the Athabasca Landing Trail and helped to complete the requirements for the grant and get out and got to explore the trail. Had another great opportunity and learn with the Real Times Operations Center in Edmonton with some council members and Staff Sergeant Mark Hall. And really got to understand the value of this great service. Also, attended the Wildberry Festival in Boyle. The, and the RCMP musical ride was an excellent to see. It was great work and great organization with the Athabasca Egg Society that brought this to the region. Great job. Also want to mention August twenty-sixth is the FCSS and Community Services Protective Services BBQ here at the office. And other than that, not a lot happening. Great to see the gravel trucks out and enforcement being proactive and meeting with residents. And that's all I've, both I have.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Councillor Anderson, do you want to chime in?
Sure. Yeah, again, not a lot of committees meeting. Did have a Pembina River Zone meeting in Edmonton. It was a great opportunity to connect with some of the regional members of council and see kind of what everybody's facing. And it's also a great reminder that what we face here isn't necessarily so different than what everybody else is facing. Everybody's kind of trying to build their communities with you know, less funding and all the different things. So it's great. Also got an opportunity through ARMS to welcome our new NJHL hockey team, the Athabasca Rivermen to Athabasca. So that was a great opportunity. It's going to be exciting to see them start to play. I know the ice opened up today for anybody looking to go to shinny or public skate. And I think they also started advertising who they have recruited to their team. They are signed to their team. I'm not, I'm not a hockey expert, but I know I've seen Facebook posts. So it's gonna be an exciting time for our region and hopefully bring some new opportunities to us.
Regarding that, is that on, like, how are they advertising that through, through a website or? Or Facebook or how are they advertising all this stuff? Or is it through the ARMS?
I've seen it on Facebook.
Oh, okay.
It may be other places too.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, so councillor Gerlach.
Yes, first, second weekend of August, the annual fair was held in Rochester. The weather looked so bleak in the morning, but turned out to be an absolutely beautiful day. And everybody seemed to have a, a great time. For the small number of volunteers that provided the opportunity, it was a great success as far as I can see. Also, I'd like to announce that we've had some rainfall in the area which we seem to be missing. It went around us continuously. And the greater operator got out on the roads with a little bit of moisture. And now people are driving the country roads to try and avoid the pavement. So the roads are beautiful. They're just doing absolutely excellent job. And uh, there's not too much other than that to report right now. Oh, and I'm going to make two presentations this week for sixty-fifth anniversaries, which are always a joyous occasion. So I'm looking forward to that.
Perfect. I guess it's eleven o'clock. Maybe we should, maybe we should break and go to our next delegation and then come back to, uh, to the reports. Morning. You betcha. Uh, welcome and, uh, you're from Cube Investment Management?
I am.
And, uh, we'll go around and introduce ourselves and, uh, and then we'll get you to introduce yourself and, and and let us know, uh, the information and then, yeah. The, the mic is always, you can turn it on with the button there whenever you want to talk. Can you, you turn it on and that, eh? Okay, okay. We got one cost wrong by Zoom, but, uh, okay, we may as well start with Councillor Gerlock.
Good morning. My name is Joe Gerlock, Division One Athabasca, Athabasca, Rochester, Perry. Thanks.
Good morning. Thank you for being here and welcome. I'm Tracy Holland, councillor for Division Five, which is east of Athabasca as well as reefer the county.
Welcome Kelly Chamsik from Division Seven Grassland, Atmore, Prospeda areas.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle-Casland area.
Councillor Hall.
Brian Hall. I reside in Division Four, which is four far south Athabasca area.
Good morning, Rob Minns, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake, Anwick area. And around the room, we have Mr. Schinkelberg, Communications Coordinator, um, Recording Secretary, Miss Leah Blair, uh, Miss Shawdy Amley with Director of Corporate Services. Bob Beck that is, is not, not with us right now, but he will come back. And Cole Brenham with the Town and Country paper. So and on that note, you can go ahead and
So I just hold down, like, pardon me, just hold down and speak on here?
Nope, nope. Just as soon as the red light's on.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, I'm Wyatt Linds. I'm an Associate Portfolio Manager at Cube Investment Management. It's a portfolio management firm stationed in Edmonton, but we service all of Alberta. So I do have two presentations prepared today. One is economic outlook. It'll take about five, seven minutes. Um, we offer it to our municipal clients. Um, it's kind of a breakdown of the economy, how it's currently unraveling with tariffs, inflation, interest rates, kind of the main economic drivers. How it's impacting Alberta, specifically Northern Alberta and the residents here, which I think will be of benefit to the council. And additionally, after that, we'll have a general presentation that we give, um, kind of giving more about our municipal investment services. So be- before I get into it, I did meet with Adil, um, I think in November, December before he departed and the, kind of the agreement moving forward was we are going to meet again in March to discuss further about our municipal investment services. But since that he is no longer here, I did reach out to Piers Delegation. That's part of the reason I'm here today. Um, but I'll move into the presentation. So in terms of an economic outlook, there's three main areas, which I think the council would want to be familiar with. So the first is inflation, the second being interest rates and the third being international trade. Those are the main three drivers that really, um, are going to be evident in terms of the macroeconomic impact, uh, on the, the national level and also on the provincial level. So in terms of inflation, the main indicator of inflation is called Consumer Price Index, which is essentially a basket of goods that gets repriced every month to see how much it's changed. As you can see, we had a pretty significant spike there in twenty twenty-two. Um, on the presentation, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but there was a pretty significant spike from the influx of cash flow that the Bank of Canada had during COVID. Um, and because of that, that price of goods rose significantly. And in order to combat that, the Bank of Canada rose interest rate, interest rates significantly to try and taper down that inflationary level. So moving forward, um, in terms of inflation, we've seen that decrease significantly over the past two years. However, there are increasing and decreasing catalysts moving forward, the most important one being tariff pressures. So in terms of tariffs and how they impact prices, when a tariff comes across a border, the business is most likely going to add on that additional tax to the consumer and increase their prices. So the businesses are not exactly feeling that cut. Most of it's going to be felt by the consumer itself. So that's why you may have seen, um, products increase in price recently. Um, an example of this, to this area may be farming equipment. A lot of that is, uh, created and processed, um, and built in the US like John Deere products and they come across, um, the border. And depending if it's USMCA, um, safe or not, is dependent if it'll be tariffed. So United States, Canada and Mexico have a trade agreement. If your goods are, I believe, seventy-five to eighty percent sourced within your country, then you can tariff free. Um, however, if it's not, then it is tariffed. Um, and that tariff is what is causing the inflationary pressures we're going to be seeing here probably in the next six to twelve months. Similar to what happened with COVID, they had an influx of cash coming to the economy. No one was quite concerned about inflation. Twelve months later, inflation was quite rampant. And there's also a slight decrease in catalyst there with decreasing energy prices because of carbon tax removal. Hopefully that continues. Um, uh, but at the current moment, uh, inflation is within that one to three percent level, which is the Bank of Canada's target. And we expect it to be there for the rest of twenty twenty-five, but twenty twenty-six, you'll probably see a slight uptick from those tariffs. Uh, moving on to interest rates. Uh, as you can see there, the Bank of Canada had it all the way at five percent in July twenty twenty-three, and they tapered it all the way down to about two point seven five percent. And that policy rate is kept steady. Um, as of right now, the Bank of Canada and the governor of the Bank of Canada have stated that they're waiting to see how tariffs, um, kind of unfold. But the general consensus among, uh, the major economists at the big six Canadian banks, along with other economists across the globe is that Canada will be cutting from that two point seven five percent policy rate, probably down to two point five to two point two five. What this means for council is they're most likely to see more attractive financing in the later half of twenty twenty-five or early twenty twenty-six, because that's when the rates are expected to be cut. Um, right now, the Bank of Canada is kind of holding steady because they want to see how the tariffs unfold, but the general consensus is there's still going to be some cuts. Uh, so in terms of international trade, this is the, the most important part. So on March fourth, there's twenty-five percent tariff that was put on most Canadian goods, um, along with ten percent on energy. Um, everything, uh, that is not included in the USMCA trade agreement. And then March thirteenth, Canada responded with twenty-five percent tariff on about thirty billion dollars of US goods that are not part of the USMCA. And, uh, I wasn't able to get the updated PowerPoint in time, but, uh, recently, August first, the US upped from twenty-five percent tariff to thirty-five percent tariff. So the tariff on the energy sector is not overly concerning because ninety-nine percent of the energy we put across the border to be refined in the US, uh, is exempt because we're taking it out of the ground here in Alberta. So it's USMCA exempt. So you're not getting tariffed on that. Ninety-nine percent of the energy going across is not tariffed. What would be tariffed are things that we bring over from say China or any other European country, crate here and send over. However, that doesn't mean there are not indirect effects. So even though that our energy and most of our goods are not being tariffed, there's still indirect impacts. So what that means is even though that their tariffs aren't directly impacting it, energy producers in the area may be more hmm, maybe more risk averse in creating new projects. Energy prices are dropping. They may not want to commit to large capital projects if that's the case. And also, when you have inflationary pressures on other goods, they often leak into even those that are tariff free. So it affects the entire economy. So even though there's not a direct impact, there's still an indirect impact. So based on tariffs, um, in the past, what we're going to be expecting to see is an economic slowdown. So you might see a slight contraction in GDP, reorganization of trade. We've already started shipping oil and gas to different countries, China and Europe. And then, uh, you might see, uh, increased prices in Canada as suppliers are passed on to the consumers. So the impact on residents of Northern Alberta in the energy sector, probably not a significant impact. Um, you might see a slight leak so into the inflationary pressures of the energy sector. No direct impact, as I said. But you're most likely going to see energy producers being less opt to have new projects. Reorganization of trade. So everything's going to be a bit of a growing pain here for the next six to twelve months. And then in terms of farming machinery coming across the border, you're most likely seeing increased prices on that as well. Which is going to be higher operational costs for farmers. And also there's a lot more volatility in terms of crop prices because of this, making it a bit, uh, uncertain on what the profit margins will be for farmers in the area. Uh, so the takeaway for this economic, um, presentation is that if tariffs continue, there'll probably be a slight contraction in GDP, a slight increase in inflation. Northern Alberta may experience a slight decrease in jobs if, uh, energy prices keep pushing down and energy producers are less, um, optimistic on projects. Canadian farmers may experience higher input costs, more fertilizer equipment. And lastly, Bank of Canada is expected to probably modestly reduce rates by the end of the calendar year, calendar year, possibly twenty twenty-six. So that's the end of my presentation. I wanted to make it short and sweet because with the fifteen minutes, I did want to get into the proposal because that is the main part of my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions about the outlook afterwards. So, uh, Cube Investor Management is a registered portfolio management firm with Alberta Securities Commission. We currently manage over four hundred million dollars. We've been around since two thousand. Uh, and most of our work for the last two decades has been with retail clients, so private individuals. Um, and then we slowly moved into businesses, business owners, endowments, foundations. And over the last couple of years, now institutions, and we are looking for institutions which were underserved and that could be, um, at a market that we could fit into and one was municipalities. So last year, we sat down the six of us who are registered portfolio managers at Cube and we decided, okay, well, is there room for improvement in the the municipal investment space? And after reviewing MGA section two fifty, Alt Reg one forty-nine, and we looking at past performance municipalities, we came to the conclusion that there was room for improvement. Um, and we did want to break into the space for two reasons. One is there's really only a few providers in the municipal investment space. You have ATB and a few of the major banks. And then, uh, so we did want to add additional competition to that. And the second was we did notice, this is not specific to Athabasca County, but other counties and MDs had market losses over the last four years because of the rising interest rates and the lack of, um, missing, the lack of interpretation of yield curve movements. So we saw a lot of municipalities actually sell at losses, which is quite, um, concerning, given that it's taxpayer funds. So we are, just a bit more information about Cube. We are trusted fiduciaries, so been around for twenty-four years, coming on twenty-five now. Uh, we don't hold our investments in-house. We hold everything at National Bank of Canada. They're our custodian. Uh, the reason we use that is because they do provide additional level of protection and safety for our clients. Um, and we can only transfer money to and from our client's bank account. I'm sorry, that says new, it's supposed to say Athabasca, my apologies. Um, but we are only at liberty to transfer investments to and from our clients' accounts. We can't move them to any other investment accounts. Uh, council administration can monitor investments at any time using our third-party software system index. We're very transparent of our performance. You can see daily performance, monthly performance, yearly performance, annualized, what we bought, what we sold, interest, everything is completely transparent. We also send out statements quarterly through snail mail, along with, uh, a very more chunky annual, um, uh, presentation as well. Uh, there's no locked in contract with Cube, so if Athabasca County were to invest with us the next day, your CAO reached out and said, hey, we want everything moved. There's no exit fee. There's no, nothing like that. We move everything to wherever you want it. It takes us three to five business days. We keep everything liquid. We don't like anything being locked in. We do have a dedicated research team in the house. So we have four research analysts and they're the ones who provide, um, information to the Cube PMs for us to make decisions. Um, a bit about the Cube PMs as well, uh, I didn't touch on it very much, but there's six of us. Um, four of us have master's degrees, all of us at least have a bachelor's. Four of us have CFAs, uh, the others have CIMs, um, CFPs, two of them, one has CPV, the other one's working for CPV and the six of us together do have sixty plus years of investment experience, um, which is pretty good considering Carl and I are very much on the younger side of that. Um, and we have been crafting bond portfolios for over a decade, so we've only been in the municipal space for about a year. But the difference between a fixed income portfolio for municipality versus an endowment is seamless. It's basically matching the cash flows, liquidity needs and the risk tolerance of the entity to their portfolio. And, um, I can jump into this later, but we do have a reference if you would like. The first municipality we onboarded was the town of Spirit River. Um, Steve Jack, the CAO there has said he'd be happy to serve as a reference. We've been managing them for a year and we've tripled their benchmark, which is the Canadian Bond Universe Index. So their performance has been quite strong. So the objectives when investing for municipalities is threefold or three-part rather. The first is to protect the county's principal investment. That is first and foremost, the most important for us. Um, especially given that we saw municipalities, not Athabasca County, but other counties and MDs selling at losses over the last four years, which was concerning. So the first thing I want to do is protect that principal investment so that if you ever do need to liquidate, it's never at a loss. Ideally, you know, I can't control the markets, but we can position ourselves in the best way possibly. Second is to outperform inflation. This is more suited to Athabasca County. I did take a peek on the financial statements and I do believe you're in short-term deposits. Short-term deposits and GICs essentially are built to mirror inflation. That's what the Bank of Canada sets them at. Is ideal is around probably two to three percent is what you've been getting historically over the last couple of years. It's probably even better because Bank of Canada rose. Now you're probably seeing that drop down for your short-term deposits because Bank Canada is decreasing because of the inflationary that I pressures that are decreasing, which I talked about earlier. So what we'd want to do is outperform that inflationary metric, because if you're performing with inflation, there's no additional purchasing power. That, that could be used for capital projects, additional cash outflow. And I will touch into it later, how we do outperform, uh, inflation. Um, and the third is to create a tailored strategy. So we are onboarding our second and third municipalities right now. Each one has a very specific mandate that's different than the last. Everyone has their, every municipality is one that's reflective of their cash flow needs, their liquidity needs, their risk tolerance. It's a direct representation of the county. We use five main classes of investments for our municipalities. The first is a high interest savings account. It's a liquidity tool. And the reason we use that is, uh, simply because we don't want to be selling at a loss in case interest rates do come into a very adverse situation. You do need cash at a very timely manner. Um, with a high interest savings account, there's no price attached to it. So there's no risk of ever selling at a loss, which can't be said about other investment products. The second is government corporate bonds. We set these up to mitigate reinvestment risk. So if you have ninety-day deposits and they're all maturing in ninety days, you're exposed to whatever that interest rate is at that ninety-day mark. If the Bank of Canada drops at a full percent, you're going to have to invest at a full percent lower. We want to mitigate that. So we, right now, our bond strategy for one of our municipal clients is a ten-year ladder plus a longer term bullet. So that long-term ladder with staggering maturities of bonds doesn't mean, only means when say interest rates drop in two years, you might only have one or two bonds expiring in that low interest rate environment. So you're not going to get dinged with having to reinvest your whole portfolio at that low interest rate. Auto-callable notes, flex G I Cs and marketing G I Cs are used to mitigate low return risk. This is where we outperform inflation. More specifically, flex G I Cs are customized G I Cs that have more attractive interest rates than bonds. But the most important part are the auto-callable notes and the marketing G I Cs. These are a hundred percent fully principally protected products at maturity. So there's no risk of losing your principal investment as long as you hold to maturity. But the interest is linked to an underlying index, more specifically a stock market. For example, marketing G I Cs, the town of Spirit River, we invested them into a marketing G I C, five-year product.
I guess we can move on here to our next delegation, which is Athabasca University. Welcome. Great to see you. And I don't know if we need to go around and introduce ourselves or do you know everybody around here? I think you've if that's okay, or I think everybody knows Dr. Clark. So, so on that note, I guess, I guess, thank you for coming in and with some information and that and having a discussion with us.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well this morning. Happy Tuesday to you. As I mentioned, my name's Alex Clark. I'm president of Athabasca University. My colleague Provost Catherine Swinglehurst perhaps is eminent. She's just been delayed just to a meeting at the university, which often happens, but I'll continue with our engagement and we can wait for the provost if she is able to release herself from the said meeting. Appreciate your time here this morning. I think this time of year, summer is here. For how long? I'm less sure. But it is a good time to reflect and to do so with gratitude and also to reflect on transitions. And since I was last here about a year ago, my colleague Catherine Swindle has transitioned to being provost at the university, which is the chief academic operating officer overseeing line management of our deans and line management of our faculties, as well as being the key executive who has that executive accountability for our academic vision and mission, which as a university is the most important thing. That's what we're all working at the university towards. So it's been a really exciting transition to have Catherine in post since April, along with a new chief finance officer, Stuart Johnson as well, a really exciting chapter with an executive that I'm grateful for and continues to work to transition the university. Some of these transitions you may or may not be aware of. Obviously, you've been aware of the transition of convocation back to Athabasca. And I'm pleased to share that this convocation this past June, it was our biggest ever. And you never quite know what you're going to get for convocation because you don't really know who's going to turn up. You know, the graduates who are going to turn up, but you don't know who they're going to bring with them. And this was our biggest convocation ever because we had a dramatic increase in the number of guests our graduates were bringing, fifty percent more guests than last year, which we wouldn't have envisaged is happening. But with amazing work from our colleagues in the university, but also from the multiplex. This was a really, really good event and looking forward to continue that transition this year for convocation. Continue to also increase the economic impact of convocation, recognizing that graduates and guests want to celebrate and we need to give them opportunities to do that and spend money. Transitioning as well inside the university, we've just transitioned over the last months, nine hundred courses and you don't realize nine hundred is a big number until you have to transition. Nine hundred courses to our new learning management system, which is a really great value proposition for our learners under our new strategic plan, single system. So it's a lot easier to provide better support when you have a single system and that's a mammoth job. But really exciting as we think about the future of the university and we think about how we are going to continue to support our students who are different students than others. But in that way that reflects their status of being like no other, but giving them support like no other as well. In terms of the value proposition of that, our enrollments for the first time in a number of years, both graduate and undergraduate are increasing again. And for me as a president, that's a really, really welcome transition. This is occurring in a world that the only certainty is uncertainty. And also in a sector in post-secondary where there's been about ten thousand jobs lost in post-secondary over the country, mainly due to international enrollment caps. But AU is fared in really well in this environment. And as I say, it's really good to transition to those graduate and undergraduate enrollments growing again. We never, restaurant laurels, and I've been at AU now for four years. Roughly two as dean and two and a bit as president. And when I first came in as president, I prioritized some internal transitions in I T, in the office of the president and also in governance. And just even this past week, we've continued transitioning three key portfolios, provost portfolio, provost office, finance and university relations as well. So we have the right functions in the right areas. And over the years, things get moved or forgotten about. So it's been really, really good to transition back to the right functions being in the right areas. And these, I think, are the right changes for the university. Thinking less in internal to our walls, but also our engagement with the community. It's been really, really good to transition the role and contribution of the university to Athabasca. And while we've met our requirements in terms of IMAs and jobs and the senior leadership team presence, we want to keep rejuvenating and we want to keep transitioning to that broader community contribution, thinking bigger and bigger picture. So for example, this last year, we reintroduced and rejuvenated our golf tournament. We reintroduced a learning conference in October, a staff recognition event also in fall. And last year, our Canada Day celebrations and just these past weeks, reintroducing our Athabasca Summit Employment Student Program to give young adults opportunities, what it's like to work in the university and gain experience of life and work. But perhaps still consider us as their employer of choice in future. On campus, many of these activities are focused and it's been really, really good to rejuvenate and continue that journey of transition on campus. If you had the opportunity to look at our maker space during convocation, really great new facility that will also be available to the community, our new labs, newly renovated elements in the library with also new community access. Dare I say it, for the first time in forty years, an entire suite of new toilets in the building. And as those of you who may attend the forum in October on campus during the election, also rejuvenating governing chambers. We're now spending on average, and it is increasing over a million dollars a year on rejuvenating our campus. Looking forward to continuing that transition. So when you add all these transitions together, what do they make? They make more learners changing more lives. They make more community engagement. But they also contribute to transitioning our reputation provincially and beyond. Were questions when I went to stampede first time as president two years ago, what about asking, are we still alive? How are things going? And some focus on walls and frosty. I'm pleased to say that last year and most particularly this year, I've seen the fruits of these transitions in terms of how we are seen in the province from the highest office down and across, where we are now getting pitched opportunities to contribute from the highest offices down and across. It's important that we continue to transition together. It's important that we continue to focus on the future together and keep this momentum going with that spirit of togetherness. And with that end in mind, I'd be keen to share with you some perspectives as we move forward in terms of some of the discussions we've had about broader economic development and contribution. In terms of our work and your potential contribution or an advocacy as we continue to lobby and position for investment in the university. Investment in our commitment, as you've seen, and it's expressed in many, many different ways to place in Athabasca. Also harnessing with that commitment, our greatest strengths. We have the biggest nurse practitioner program, not only in the province, but also in Canada. We are bigger than all the others combined and they are the future of healthcare across the country, as well as in the province and in particular for rural and the north. And we need your support as we position with the government to hear the investment in nurse practitioners is important for the county. The investment in Athabasca University has yielded contributions and transitions have seemed to have been made and to position well so that it's not just the university who's trying to press the case to government, but it is the community and their representatives. You have a unique potential and power here to bring hearts and minds to support the important conversations we're having and would really appreciate if you could express that in some form of tangible support, a letter or further lobbying and advocacy, that would be very, very much appreciated. So that's where we are. That's where we're going and just appreciate continuing to travel this journey together. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for, for this huge information as far as I can see from and to be able to put it out to the public through a recording and everything like that. If people want to watch this later on, we got the paper here. To be able to, to move this forward and in, in your words, which is, which is amazing. And I want to thank you very much for coming in regarding that lobbying. You betcha. We, we've, you know, if we've made up with a minister or something like that, or if we can, we'll, we'll, on I think I can speak on behalf of council that we would be that would be a, a perfect opportunity to be able to do that. And yeah, letter if if you need letters of support, there's probably no problem there with giving you guys that. I noticed or I remember four years ago, sitting here talking about the university as council and coming up and we had presentations coming in and lobbying and lobbying and trying to get Mr. L. Renshaw was in here as a, as a a person to advocate for, for the university and that and it's, and it's moved so much forward. It's such a great, great thing to see that working, banding together as a region, we, we've, we've helped do that with you guys too also. So thank you very much. I guess, anybody else?
Reeve Hallam. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Going back to, to your words and which I hear a lot of and I can contest to, it is a university like no other. It's amazing. This summer, this past summer really was incredible when I was given the privilege to attend convocation. Unbelievable, world-class. You know, we walked into the, to the field house and we wondered where were we just transported to? Is this really Athabasca? It was absolutely incredible, amazing. The smiles and it was just unbelievable to be experiencing. The energy was incredible. The people were incredible and, and just to see the joy and smiles and how everyone was so welcomed and they just felt as part of the community. It was incredible. So thank you. The work that you are doing and your team are doing, the mammoth job that you have is definitely, we're seeing those improvements. We're seeing, everyone is talking about the university. And as you mentioned, we hear about it as well when we chat with MLAs, when we chat with ministers. You are very correct. You're on the map and you're doing an excellent job. And thank you so much for all the work that's being put into it and the efforts that are being put into it and what you're concentrating on and what you're focusing on. And, and being community and together is what we really love to hear and, and you're doing a fantastic job. Thank you. I can't say enough.
I really appreciate it, Tracy. It does take not only teamwork within the university, but also work with community members. We have, let's think fourteen hundred volunteer hours contributed to convocation every year and we've never had more community volunteers from various groups from the rugby club to the Rotary Society. It truly is a community work and teamwork together. It doesn't turn on a dime. And the world of post-secondary, I mean, the world generally is challenging just now. The only certainty is uncertainty in the world of post-secondary is challenged across the country. But where communities could work with the university that positions us so, so well to make our contribution. Things don't turn on a dime and I've always been about getting the foundations in place, fixing the roof and also trying to reach for the sky. And the challenge is doing all three at once. But when we work with community and we work with our colleagues and teams, we can do that. Also working with the new minister. So we have a new minister in advanced education, his name is Miles McDougall. My colleague is going to come in momentarily to the session. We'll describe that some really good couple of meetings with Minister McDougall. He was really open to hearing about the commitment from the community to the university. And one of the great challenges is when on the one hand, things are going well and we've transitioned from some challenging times to much better times in terms of contribution. We have to show value to government and show the extra level of achievement we can contribute to rural and the north when we work with the province. There could be some scenarios where they're quite happy to leave us alone because things are okay. But actually those efforts to contribute, particularly for the healthcare challenges in terms of rural in the north with the provincial government, because just like what we can achieve with the community is so much more and better when we then work with the provincial government that I think can take us to new levels together, leveraging our strengths in the nurse practitioner space, but really continue transition and show this commitment to community, whether that's a residency program here for our nationally renowned program. The devil's in the detail, but we want to work together and the minister has a unique opportunity. I think also a unique position in there. So any efforts you can make to contribute to lobbying for us, whether you get a chance to talk to the minister or others within the health system around the value of nurse practitioners and the unique place that AU has in educating us practitioners for the north. And also the contributions we can make to rural economic development here by really leveraging those strengths to bring that to the local population and to bring that to the local populace here is really important. I see Catherine has joined me here. Join breath Catherine. I don't know if you've got anything to add from our discussions with Minister McDougall or anything else specifically as we think about how county can help us relative to our work in terms of provincial government commitment and investment.
Thanks so much, Alex, and apologies to the committee for, for being late. University governance meeting went overtime, which is a good thing. However, it's, it's had me come in kind of last minute here. We're at a really exciting point, I think, in terms of Athabasca University's history and in terms of AU's position here in the, in the community. Alex has talked to you about in terms of the provincial ask and, and really thinking about, you know, an ask for AU is really about an ask for the region and really thinking about how we leverage the good things happening at AU for economic growth and development here in the region. But also thinking about the region as, as not only a gathering place, but a catalyst, I think, for economic development in rural and Northern Alberta. And I think Alex talked about the nurse practitioner program. I've just come out of an academics governance meeting where we've got some exciting new programs that really do have emphasis on the north, on rural and really building capacity, I think, for our rural communities and really thinking about Athabasca as the center of that, not only the university, but Athabasca, the region and how, how we work together to really think about economic development, not only here in the region, but, but across rural Alberta and rural Canada.
Awesome and welcome. Totally understand with, with meetings, how it goes. So yeah. So, um, yeah, I, I, this takes me back to, uh. Northern Lakes College, uh, convocation. And, uh, sitting down there and, and, and I was, uh, lucky enough to go there and represent Athabasca County. And Mayor Belay was there also, and at the same time, the deputy minister of, uh, advanced education was there. So we actually had a chance to have a sit down with, with him real quick, real quick. But the, uh, he did tell us that, uh, he knows quite a bit about the university, Athabasca University. So like I said, every time we do get a chance. We will, uh, we will advocate for you and as much as we can. So thank you. On that note, anybody else have any, uh, councillor Gerlock?
Yeah, just a quick question. Uh, you did mention enrollment caps. Is that enrollment caps on foreign students or, or specifically? And is that detrimental to the university or is it?
Yeah, great question. Uh, so I'll talk about enrollment caps and also talk about some of the province's work. Uh, around finances at the moment. So the federal government and Catherine will correct my opinion correct here. Have introduced a five percent cap on the Canadian population in terms of immigration numbers. Most of which impacts on students who come to Canada from, uh, other countries. And Canada has a tremendous brand for education. People come from Canada, from all over the world to get a first-class university education. And most of them stay here. These are highly qualified people. I, you know, fall into the immigrant category myself because you have an amazing quality of life. Uh, and, uh, with, with probably very little warning. The federal government introduced a cap on immigration numbers that then directly impacted. On not only immigration numbers generally, but also on universities and colleges. In terms of that flow of students and their ability to get the adequate visas in place. To study over here. That impacts AU less. Because we take a very, very careful approach to our enrollment. Some institutions, particularly colleges in Ontario, most notably. They kind of put better mortgage, if you like, on international students. And that was very lucrative for a period. But similar to what happened in Australia ten years ago. That supply and also that revenue can stop very quickly. That creates real challenges. Because we've had a focus on Canadian students. And also students within the province, not international students. AU is well placed to navigate these challenges. One potential, uh, mediating factor for our overall fiscal wellbeing. At the moment, the province is undertaking a financial review of the post-secondary system. It's called the MINTS panel review. If there is a known unknown, we're navigating just now, it's what the findings of that panel will be. I would always want a post-secondary education to be seen as an investment. Because for any individual, it's probably the best money you can spend for your overall. Not only earning capacity, but life quality and actually life expectancy. A higher education really does position you well. But what the findings of that MINTS panel will be are uncertain. Other big universities like the U-15, UV, University of Calgary. They may have capacity to navigate whatever that panel brings back. We are a university like no other. We're situated, the only rural-based university in the province. We would hope that our unique nature is accommodated and addressed in that panel findings. Uh, and that the overall fiscal stability and our ability to make our highest contribution, uh, remain solid. Despite or perhaps because of those panels recommendations, which are due to come at the end of summer. So we'll see. We remain cautiously optimistic because I think when we presented to that panel, they understood our unique nature. They understood our unique place. And hopefully they got a sense of our unique value. Not only to students, but also to the community in the county here in Athabasca.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to imagine that just such a short time ago, it was almost all lost. And the change in direction. Has really been, um, a real positive thing for the community. And, uh, it's just inspiring to see it continue in that direction.
Yes, I, I, I like the way you look at that. It has changed immensely. So. Where are you going?
There we go. Um, and I appreciate what you had just said there. Because as, as mentioned, the, the leaps and bounds that we have seen in the transitions that you have been making. Are incredible and it is very much commendable to all of you for your forethought. And your, and your future forward thinking and your compassion and your community mindedness. I mean, it is huge and it is well seen and, and it's, um, very much appreciated as well. You have a very bright future and, and we're glad you're here in this region to make it all happen. Well done.
Okay. Any other, seeing, seeing no other questions or remarks or anything? Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to, just to close, I really appreciate any advocacy efforts you can do. And if there's a letter you could write, um, to the minister. That would be much appreciated. We're at a quite a sensitive stage now where your advocacy efforts will be really important. So very much appreciate that. And on the other hand, um, it's an honor to do the jobs, uh, something that I can speak for myself that I do. It's an honor to work with the kind of colleagues and we have amazing, we've attracted amazing talent. To, um, the university. We want to continue that. Jobs are important. Jobs at every level are important. We want to continue that. My door is always open. So, you know, sometimes it's about joining the dots that are going on. We want to join the dots more between convocation and retailers. In the downtown area so that we can get more of the, the guests and the grads to, uh, to spend money and stay. We want to increase the ability to host more people more often, um, for longer periods. So my door is always open. Uh, I know I speak for Catherine as well, who's a member of the Chamber of Commerce. But we're out and about in Athabasca all the time. If you have ideas about ways that the university can continue to transition the conversation. And to continue to contribute anew in different ways. Please don't hesitate to reach out. Uh, we're here and we're keen to be part of economic development. Uh, we're keen to be part of this continuing growth story of commitment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I guess on that note, we'll, we'll, uh. We may as well break for lunch till twelve thirty. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay, there we are. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting and I think we're still in councillor updates. May as well go to Reeve Holland.
Thank you. Busy summer, lots going on with community engagements and whatnot. I'll just run through kind of chronologically how things went down. From our last meeting, I think was June, the Committee of the Hall. So we had the Carlton Bridge ribbon cutting, still receiving great amount of feedback on that bridge and how impressed people are with it and the job that was done there. I was able to give greetings at the Buffalo Lake Maytee Settlement Indigenous Peoples' Day. And that was an amazing event as well and a lot of fun to attend and I really appreciated that. I also attended the Athabasca Native Friendship Centre Indigenous Peoples' Day event at the Riverfront. It was well, it was well attended and always a great venue there at the Riverfront, people really enjoyed. I've been attending biweekly meetings with regards to the Athabasca Landing Trail, the section between Minook and Perry Vale for the Active Transportation Grant work. So more information will come from that at our council meeting. I attended a virtual conversation with the primary care Alberta's leadership team. A lot of information there as well as we're all hearing about all of the changes and transitions from AHS. Community engagements was the Athabasca Land Trail Planning and Design Open House in Minook. Also well attended, a lot of people coming down from the area who are trail users that are getting the information and giving their input as well. There was also the open house for the housing assessment that we're doing as a region at the multiplex. And I understand that was well attended. I came in a little bit late because the two open houses were at the same day. Gave greetings as well for the Indigenous Peoples' Day event that was the first time held at the Athabasca Healthcare Centre on the grounds there, another great event. Well attended and enjoyed by all and delicious lunch, et cetera, that took place. Of course, it's trail season, so I participated in the Peace River Trail Cleanup Event. Another trail that just blew my mind, the amount of work that has gone over the, done over the years. Beautiful, beautiful trail. And I can't thank the Athabasca Recreational Trails Association members there for all of the work and the volunteerism that they have done for decades and decades. And it's just amazing. If you get a chance, you gotta go out and see it for sure. Gave remarks at the Magnificent River Rats Festival, raising of the flag for Canada Day. And again, we all know how well the Magnificent River Rats Festival is done and enjoyed by so many. Finished up with the ALT that councillor Chamsick touched on the cleanup. We were rained out on the original day and so we had some cleanup. We had to carry on and wait for another day. And so that was awesome. And thanks again for all the help and the volunteerism that we're seeing there. It's really coming together. Gave greetings at the Fly In BBQ. That BBQ is always well attended. People enjoy it from far and wide and it was well done. I think it was one of our better ones that we've seen, not only from attendance, but with all of the different vendors and the different things that were happening, the tables and the food trucks. And it was well done. You know, the county needs to really pat themselves on the back for the organization and that happened there. Also went to the RTOC tour, the Real Time Operations Centre at the K Division. Man, oh man, I was blown away. That is one heck of a facility and the technology that they have behind them that they're doing to support the RCMP across Alberta and to keep our communities safer. It was just the coolest thing ever. If councillors get an opportunity to go, please do. You won't, you will not disappoint being there. We also were lucky enough to have a talk from the ERT group, the fellows behind the scenes and that do some pretty amazing work out there. I couldn't believe the equipment that they have and the training that they have and the abilities that they have. It is just an amazing thing and really thank Sergeant Hall, Staff Sergeant Hall for giving us that opportunity. It was well worth being able to see. And now when we hear about what's happening out there, it's really neat to be able to vision that. We also had a few stakeholder meetings, meeting with the Alpak representative. We will be meeting with the executive, Deputy Reeve Minns and I, and having a tour of the Alpak facility in September, really looking forward to that. We also had the Trans-Canada Trail representative we have in our area and Athabasca Recreation Trails Association through the ALTSC, we did a road tour. Through, we have about 60 kilometers of trail in our county. So we, she was thrilled to be able to see it all and see all of the different entrances and where the trail goes. And of course, make sure that signage is in place and all of those fun things. Also attended the Wildberry Festival. That was amazing. Love to see that. It was just like going up White Av almost when you're having all the different street vendors and that kind of thing. It was really cool as well to attend. And of course, the RCMP Musical Ride Event. Well done to the Athabasca Ag Society. That was huge, well attended. People loved it. Also did the visit with the National Junior Hockey League team that was, that is scheduled to be working out and playing out of the multiplex. They were a great bunch to chat with. Looking forward to those games and looking forward to seeing what all is coming out of the Hockey League. And I think I'll leave it at that because probably take enough, enough of your time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Wallack?
I attended the Alberta Hub meeting back in July, sorry, June. And they are facing some budget cuts as a whole for redos from the Alberta government. So funding changes would be happening per capita for each municipality that's involved. I was also elected onto the Board of Directors for Alberta Hub. So now we have a voting voice at the table for Athabasca County and that's about it.
Awesome. Councillor Cromwell?
Thank you very much. Aside from various meetings and committees though, some of the things I want to highlight. Speaking with ratepayers, a lot of engagement, a lot of kudos to public work for a lot of the work they're doing right now.
Councillor Cromwell, you're muted.
All right, let's start that from the beginning. Aside from the various meetings and boards, things I want to highlight on is many communication with the ratepayers. First off, a big, big kudo to our Infrastructure Department, Public Works for a lot of the road repair culvers and things they've been working on, especially the yellow bridge road between the connector and the K Road. As the school bus prepared for the new year, they're very excited to have that road worked on. Communication from ratepayers that are watching what we're doing and, and a lot of comments from people saying we're finally getting, you know, things going the right direction. We're making some of the headway that they've been waiting for and longing for us to do. So a good kudo to our group for that. And then the one thing I do want to highlight, I did put in an RFD for an upcoming council meeting. But the, the ever so present issue with dirt bikes and OHVs on the back roads, especially around the Wandering River area, as you know, which is inundated with campgrounds, both approved and non-approved and a large amount of recreational land. I know that, you know, even me being out with the family, out fishing the, the number of dirt bikes, especially that are passing by ripping at very, very high speeds, ripping up our, a lot of our roads is getting pretty frustrated by ratepayers. I've been sent videos from ratepayers who are, you know, standing out there asking people to slow down and not rip up their road. And the vulgar and horrible replies that, that they're getting is really disheartening to see. And I know we need to, we need to find some way to, to solve that problem before it becomes a larger problem again. Hopefully, you know, more patrols from our, our CPOs on our backroads, our evenings, weekends. You know, all during the day on the weekends when we need them out there, but will definitely be a topic. I'm looking forward to discussing here as we look at ways to make sure our roads are safe and both our residents and visitors are taken care of, being able to enjoy our area and work in harmony. That'll be about it.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned, I guess on my end, yeah, the ROTC. RTOC was, was, that's the second time I went actually and I would honestly go a third or fourth time. It's, it's, it's a great great way to find out information. What, what they do there is amazing and to actually be able to, like Reeve said, put, put the thought into it when, when actually stuff is happening out there is amazing. BRT, that was special. And then had a few meetings, ended up doing lots of camping, actually had an Alice meeting and a oh jeez, I can't remember, that meeting's coming out of the yin yang, but it's, it's all great. One place I went actually was, was amazing and thankfully I went to it finally as, as a family. We went to Hayen in the thirties over in Malague. And that is, if anybody ever gets a chance to, to go to that, it's, it is something to see. And, and the organizing of it was, is unbelievable. Actually seen a few councillors from other, other municipalities there, recognized them and talked to them a little bit. It was, it was good. And yeah, it was a great, great family event if you ever get a chance. So yeah, rather than not just doing county stuff. Okay, so I think that's so we'll move on to 6.1 or six, Business arising from Minutes, 6.1 EFT Security Implementation, page 73 of your agenda. And I guess I'm going to look at administration to have a discussion on this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. First of all, I want to apologize for the delay in getting this back to you. I know it's been on the books for quite some time. We have been doing some research and continually communicating with our financial institution, ATB, and getting information. They actually provided me with 165-page, I guess, implementation guidebook, which I didn't attach because I didn't think you wanted to see 165-page. But it's really right down to the nitty gritty of all the steps you need to do. Also did more research and checked with other municipalities and what they're doing. And one thing I didn't include in the report is I just learned this morning through ATB is there actually is a charge for every EFT transaction. It's $2.50 per transaction. And I guess you can weigh it against the, the processing, the printing, the signing, the postage for all checks. So our, our goal here is to reduce the number of checks that are printed and reduce the risk of check fraud and checks being lost and reprinting of checks and rushing checks. So the whole concept behind EFT is to help streamline our processes. I know we originally talked to you about some of the risks that come along with it. But in doing our research, talking to ATB in, through many discussions and also talking to other municipalities, we do believe that this process outweighs the risks of just the print checks because print checks are tending to be a problem and we've seen some ourselves. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to, I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay, thank you for that, Reeve Holland.
Thank you. I'm really excited to see this. I think this is a wonderful way to go. I realize as you mentioned this morning, there is a charge, but I think it's probably way less than the manual way. Any type of thing that we can automate, I think just gives us that leg up. So I really appreciate all the efforts and the work that's going into this and look forward to seeing it roll out. Just curious, it mentioned in, under the financial that there's possibly vendors, it's, it's being asked vendors who wish to utilize EFT. Is it in the future as, as the program is, is put into place, going to be something that would be phased out and it would be a mandatory situation or is that even possible?
That's a tough question. I think some, you know, I think municipalities continue to print checks. And maybe, perhaps, maybe once the new technology as well, the AI technology that's being proposed in the future, once we know it's 100% secure, then you could do that. I'm not aware of anybody that's doing it solely just by EFT.
Awesome. Thank you so very much. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Chamsick?
Do you need, I'll put through the recommended motion.
Yeah, we can, we can, sure, recommend. So any other discussion? If this is implemented, we'll be able to still write checks and stuff like that even though, right? Because there are probably still some people out there that, that would like to have a check in their hands instead of seeing it in the bank, but.
Yes, we'll start off with staff expenses and council expenses. We'll start off with that and then we'll start introducing the, out to all of our customers, our vendors who wish to be paid by EFT.
Perfect.
And also want to add that if a Canada post-strike does actually happen, this could save our bacon as well.
Yeah, yeah, you betcha. Exactly. Okay, any other questions regarding it? Okay. Councillor Chamsick recommend, recommendation to move, move to receive discussion report with EFT Security Implementation as information. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. That would be seven and no. Councillor Gerlach?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I don't mean to look disrespectfully counsel, but I gotta have my leg elevated. So I'm slouching my chair, look like a nut.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned, not a problem. Okay, so moving on to 6.2 Traffic Bylaw, page 75 of your agenda. And manager Travis Shalapai has brought forward this, this bylaw and that. And I guess we'll start off with yourself, welcome. And start with yourself with some discussion on it, I guess.
Thank you, thank you, councillor Minns. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this forward today. A little bit of history, a long history on this is this has been one of our action items since early 2024. It initially came to Protective Services under the guise of addressing road bans and having the CEO the ability to do that without going through council when required in the spring. From there, we, I've worked with a couple of different infrastructure directors now and we, we started cleaning up the old bylaw. And I'll be honest, one thing led to another and it resulted in a full modernization of the bylaw. So it was a bylaw that had been updated several times and when you start resealing the highway enough times, it requires a full, a full redo. So we worked with our policy and governance specialist here, Mrs. McConnell, legal at infrastructure, and we went through and did a, a full modernization of the bylaw. Now, I won't go through line by line on the fire bylaw, or not the fire bylaw, but the traffic bylaw. But there is, there's a couple of key changes. So obviously the There's a couple of key changes. So obviously the uh. Direction council was to look at the roadband piece, which we have. Um. As we were going through, we all looked at other best practices in terms of uh. Management of certain things like signage. Um, currently it required councils resolution for us to put up a stopper yield sign. Um, which at times could lead to us facing some challenges, especially if it's a public safety hazard. Um, getting it before council to give that direction could cause delays. So we've moved to uh, delegate a lot of that dis- direction down to the C O position, which is in. Align with uh municipalities all around us. So we've uh moved on the signage piece, speed limits and road bans. Uh, that authority has been delegated down to the C O. The other section which addresses something that uh Protective Services has dealt with. Since I've started is uh five point eleven, uh livestock. So we don't have the stray animal act in the county of Athabasca. Which means we can't deal with any sort of livestock on the roadway. We have to refer people to the brand inspector. Um, that's a process and we have a lot of ratepayers that are quite unhappy with our inability to actually do anything about this. So what we've done is we've put provision in the traffic bylaw to allow us to address the specific issue that we see, which is the unattended livestock on a roadway. Now it allows us to continue the education piece, but then if we do have prolific offenders actually. Uh, start to do a little bit of enforcement to, to encourage that, that the uh hazard be removed from the roadway. So in a nutshell, that's, that's the big overarching change was the administration piece moving to the C O and uh. Us starting to speak to a little bit of livestock. Um, otherwise there was some terminology, additional definitions, just overall policy or uh bylaw clarity. Uh, we have identified already that we have a numbering error in the bylaw. So if you do uh make a motion to move it to first reading, we will be amending. It is. Five point one five, we have a repeat. So unfortunately, when we use track changes, sometimes things get missed when you start accepting all the changes. And eleven, uh, so five decimal one five and eleven decimal four. Both require numbering changes should this go forward.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. I think I was uh. The one person I know that asked about the livestock thing and thank you for bringing. And you said you were gonna bring that forward and, and perfect. I noticed that in the bylaw and I went, okay. That is gonna be a, a benefit, uh. Uh, in a few people's areas. So, so thank you very much and uh. And if it, it just makes it more efficient, right? For the C O or their designate to be able to put on road bounds and stuff like that. That's just a lot better. So I guess we got uh any discussion on the bylaw? Counselor Wallack?
Um, so. Does seven point two, the golf cart bylaw, is that gonna affect this traffic bylaw? This, if we do anything changes with that? Sorry, like, uh, sorry, seven point two of our agenda. There's a, the golf cart bylaw request. Is that gonna change those traffic requests if we do something?
Through the Chair, Counselor Wallack, um. We would have to pass separate bylaw to deal with that matter, uh, as it is a pilot right now. We wouldn't uh. Fully amended into the traffic bylaw unless that becomes a permanent thing within the province, but we'd probably have a similar to O H Vs, a separate bylaw for golf carts if we proceed forward.
Uh, it's just my second question for the livestock one. Do we have the capacity as a county to, to do that? To manage the, the wildlife, livestock?
Uh, through the Chair to Counselor Wallack. So for having this offense in here just gives us the tool to work with Leonard to uh. Basically educate if they don't want to deal with it, then it's, it's gonna be ticketing provisions to have them keep, keep livestock off of, off of the roadways. If we were to pursue the stray animal act, which is what would give us the actual ability to impound and do uh different things if livestock was at large. Then we would require facilities to house livestock. So most municipalities avoid the stray animal acts purely because it is. Something where now you need to tend for livestock, you need to be able to isolate it from herds. You can't just. Put it in a pasture with a bunch of other cattle. You gotta make sure it's quarantined and fed, watered, supervised. So. For us to go after the stray animal act, we don't have the capacity. For us to put one tool in traffic bylaw that can address that specific issue, we have capacity for that.
Okay, uh, Reeve Holland.
Um, thank you really much. This is great. I, I was so thrilled to see. As you mentioned, it come out of the old one and just start and, and bring it right into twenty twenty-five. The work that's got into this is huge. And is much appreciated. I'm more than happy to um put forward the recommendation. Um, that this bylaw be forwarded to council for first reading as presented. I would actually go as far as uh second and third. Um, it's well done. Great job.
Okay, so uh. Any other discussion regarding that? So we got a motion on the floor to. The traffic bylaws zero twenty dash twenty twenty-five before the council for first reading as presented. Do you want amendment for second and third reading or?
Well, I think that there's a few changes that um, that you're, you'll be bringing forward. So we could um add that in here as discussed, uh, with uh changes as discussed. Um, and then bring forward. I don't know if we can add second and third, but if we can get through it all, uh, in that one day, that would be amazing.
What if we were just to put as for, for the first reading and then if, if administration feels?
We vote on it.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, okay. Is that okay? Okay. So the traffic bylaw zero twenty dash twenty twenty-five before the council first reading. As, as amended and presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, seven and O. So. Draft, policy, fire response, cost recovery, page ninety-one. So we've got a. Recommendation here, but uh, again, Mister. Manager Travis Shalapai to have a discussion regarding the, the uh fire response cost recovery policy.
Oh, thank you, Chair. So this one's, this one's gonna be relatively simple. So back in May, we uh. We had a couple of sessions where we worked on potential cost recovery policies to provide administration guidance and uh. Ensuring that we're being fair and equitable when we uh practice or, or conduct our billing processes. Uh, we took the feedback from that meeting, our meeting, which was uh scenario D. And with the twenty thousand R cap, which was, uh, as you read in the R F D was. Put in there as a placeholder to be debated further when it came back to council. And we have put together the original, or I guess the draft, cost recovery policy as per that direction. So. This is the fruits of decisions made back on May twentieth and we look to council now to provide some feedback.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Uh, discussion. Reeve Holland.
Thank you so much. Thank you for bringing this back. Um, we also received a lot of feedback. Um, with regards to that day and that conversation that was, that was happening and um, when we're listening to um, that feedback. Um, it was very um loud and clear that um, non-human caused fires. Should not be capped at twenty thousand. They shouldn't be charged at all. And um. Can we run through again the definition of non-human caused fires, please?
Absolutely. Through the Chair to Counselor Holland. So um. Realistically, in the world of fire investigation, we look for cause and origin. So human caused would be something that's a direct, as a direct result of human activity. Um, whereas non-human caused would be not. So electrical failure, something that is a mechanical failure would not be human caused. Um. Myself recreating on my property and the, my O H V causes a fire, that would be human caused. It's a direct result of my activities. Um, lightning strike would not be human caused, escape campfire would be. So uh. We avoided the use of word negligence because that is not something we investigate as fire investigators. We look at cause and origin. Uh, when you start talking about negligence, now you're getting into legal investigations where it's more of a law enforcement matter. And that's again, very difficult to prove. So we put the human caused as a. Provision to catch those that, or catch fires that are, are as a result of human activity. Again, an unattended. Burn that gets away, that's, that's as a relative hu- human activity. So. Uh, that's the, the approach we took with the development of this. Um, previously the poll, the direction we had was speaking to negligence. Which, again, we can't really prove negligence without investing a heck of a lot of money and. Uh, bringing in additional resources to, to do that investigation.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Um, and in, in hearing that, again, if it's. A situation where a fire has, has uh broken out due to non-human activities. It's very difficult to uh, for, for me, you know, and having that conversation and talking with a lot of people and, and thinking about all of these different things. That there be a charge at all. Um, so I would be in favor of um. Uh, that cap um of non-human cause be zero. Um, so zero dollars. And that's where, that's where I'm sitting with that one. Um. And as I mentioned in, in your report that we would further debate the ca- or council may wish to further debate the cap on non-human caused incidents. So. I would like to hear what um, my councilmates um, have to say with that as well. Um, and where they're, they're sitting with that. And it also mentions in the report. Um, that there may be a request of, a review of said cost by the C O whose decision would be final and binding. However, administration is proposing that appeals under a thousand dollars be so decided by the C O and, and I also agree with that as well. Um, so once again, um, I appreciate all the work and effort that goes into these and they're really well done and I'm. Basing what I had said earlier, um, of course, on hearing back from, from our residents and hearing back what. They would like to see and, and what they think is fair and, and that's of course who we work for. So that's where I'm at with the zero dollar on, on, on human cost fires.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you very much. Um, while I was the Reeve, kinda took a lot of my thunder there. I was very much against. That uh cap when it first began. And, you know, even economists about, you know, trying to encourage people not to have insurance that I think we're completely. Uh, missing the point of our conversation. I completely agree that we cannot, should not be charging people for things that are not. Of their fault. If you're violating a fire ban and you have a giant campfire at your residence and you. Light your subdivision on fire, you know what? You're, you're definitely held responsible if you're not operating safely. However, the human element, the, the part of that saying that we're just gonna recover. Just because we can, I think is completely out of line and I would not be able to support that. I, I definitely support it being rewritten, kind of like the, the Reeve was just talking about. And then I would be very happy to support that. But until we have something on paper, I, I can't see it moving forward. Uh, while being fair to our ratepayers who've been paying taxes in our county, well, some of them for a lifetime. And we're gonna use the worst day of their life to inflict the possibility of inflicting. A very large bill to me does not feel like good governance, does not feel like the right thing to do and I cannot support it.
Okay. Anybody else? Oh, Counselor Gerlock.
Reeve Holland may have taken your thunder because she also took my lightning. What happens in a case where a person is just going about their daily work with a, an implement and. Somehow it catches on fire and, and whatever. It's, it's not negligence. It's, it's just bad luck. Uh, it is human caused, but.
So, I mean, if i- i- implement results in a wildfire, um. Again, that would be human caused activity. If the implement itself, the baler catches fire because of a mechanical failure, that would be human caused. And I mean, all these we do, eh, that's the difficult part for administration. Um. Folks have vehicle insurance that we charge for a car that's insured. But not industrial equipment. Like there's, there's, there's different, uh, so many different avenues for us to, to explore. Um. It's, it's, it's really difficult. So I mean, as it's written right now, uh, we, we'd have to look at the actual scenario and. Again, as a result of human activity, well. Difficult question to answer.
Yeah. I imagine there's uh. There's probably insurance that you could have a, an overall rider on your property for a mechanical failure or, or something like that.
This is through, through the Chair to Counselor Gerlach. I actually just went through my annual insurance review with my insurance broker and I. For eighty dollars a year, I pay my liability insurance of any farming activity results in a fire. I'm, I'm covered up to. Well, well, well over twenty, twenty thousand dollars. It's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and that, that extends beyond farming operations. Even if I have livestock that escapes, gets hit on the road. That's not wildlife. That's a civil matter between neighbors. Well, insurance covers that as well. So. There's a lot of insurance policies out there and one that, I'm, I'm gonna go on a little bit of a tangent here. We, we see with uh, the disaster recovery program is loss of fences due to fire. Um, fences can be insured. Our disaster recovery program does not provide any compensation for loss of fire, uh, fence due to fire. Only what we do as a result of putting in dozer guards. And every ratepayer I speak to, I, that, that, that's involved in agriculture. I tell them, check your policy for the fences piece of it because that's. One that haunts a lot of people when we have a major fire.
That's, that's the one thing that I think we really need to get out there, that people understand it. Maybe there's a little time period before we adopt this policy. Give people a chance to adapt to it and recommend to them very strongly that they uh. Take care of the policies because like you're saying, if it's eighty bucks, that's not, that's not too. Um, drastic uh, a move for anybody to make to, to have that protection.
Okay, anybody else wanna chime in here? Counselor Cromwell, you got your hand up again?
Thank you. Um, and not to, you know, to try and argue with the chief, but. That's exactly what we're talking about. You know, we, we've talked about removing that gray area, removing that. It's tough and making sure it's documented in a way that is very clear as requested by administration so that they're not put into that. Position of, well, we can, but we can't, we might, but we might not. And we've been working very hard to get our documentation to a very clear black and white. And I personally would love to see that perhaps rewritten to take away some of that black and white because Counselor Gerlock is absolutely correct. If he's out with his baler and, and he has a bearing that sees this, which causes a fire. Well, that is human caused. Is that his fault if he's done proper maintenance on it and. You know, reacts and, and does the best to contain that fire with, with his disc or with whatever implements he has out there. Uh, you know, using Counselor Gerlach as an example. Is that fair? Is that right? I think that we need to. Maybe fine tune this bylaw a little bit more for. You know, what the definition of human caused versus mechanical failure, what mechanical failure. Will and will not be covered. I think leaving a gray area for administration to. Have to decide when Joe Farmer walks in the door and goes, hey, you know, I bought this baler. Three weeks ago, I, I'm here to, to do my work and the bearing seeds that, you know, we went through. It was in good order. And now I'm out a machine and I'm out, you know, X amount of crop and now I'm out also up to. You know, twenty thousand dollars. I think we need to make it very black and white, very to a point. Before we move it forward. That is the responsible, proper thing to do in my opinion.
Uh, Counselor Wallack.
I think that really overcomplicates the whole issue. Um, if somebody's. Combine catches on fire, unfortunately, it's the farmer's responsibility. It's their equipment. Um, they have to take precautions. They carry water, whatever they do, but it's no different than industrial. If their cat catches, touches on fire and causes a wildfire, we can't just. Be whatever. People have to carry insurance. If they want to carry insurance, then they're covered. If they don't, it's their own risk. We're not responsible for that. We're responsible for taking care of our, our county and our fire services. So. I think the way that it's written is, is well and human error is human error and. It's, it is what it is.
Okay, uh, on this, on it. Counselor Hall?
Um, I'm wondering if uh Chief Shalapai can just clarify again how this works then with residential house fires? In what circumstances there's a bill and in what circumstances there isn't? In what circumstances there's a bill and in what circumstances there isn't?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hall. So again, going back to the definition of human cause, meaning an incident that results as a direct act or omission of a person, whether intentional or unintentional, having a failure. So whether it be the combine catching fire or the freezer faulting out and resulting, that would be, that would be non-human caused. That would be, it's indirect, not a direct result of human activity. So in a, we would consider structural fires unless investigation deems that it is arson, that we can prove that it was intentionally set, it'd be a human caused, well, it it's all human caused, or that would be human caused. The the failure of the appliance would be non-human caused. So if we go with a zero dollar cap for human caused fires, we won't be billing for structure fires unless it is deemed arson.
Does that um align with what happens in the majority of municipalities that you've looked at?
Uh, through the Chair to Counselor Hall, it's been a real um mixed bag in terms of what other municipalities are doing. I can speak to one just south of us that doesn't bill for any fire response at all. They just have really, really steep fines for non-compliance with their fire bylaw. Um, we go a little bit further south and a little bit further west. We speak to municipality where they only bill if individuals have means. So now they're having to prove that the individual has means to pay the invoice. Um, a lot of municipalities will bill to a cap, but it's, it's, it is really the will of the respective councils. And it's a very uh, a very mixed bag. And and some places it's discretionary to administration, which really puts us in an awkward position to be judge, jury and executioner, which I'll be honest, isn't really fair to us. So.
Counselor Wallack.
Sorry, just to clarify, you said like, so if the freezer fails and it starts on fire, that's a non-human caused incident?
Correct. So when we we, when we defined human caused, it's direct actor omission. So so you have to directly do something that results in that fire. Um, building a house, well, that may have been, you know, fifty years ago, lots that's it's in indirectly caused by human, but the failure in electrical wiring manufacturing defect is not anyone's fault currently. Your direct actor emission, you using your freezer didn't contribute to the house burning down. It was a me- mechanical failure of that. So when we do our fire investigations, we're always looking for, was it human caused? Or non-human caused? And and we consider direct actor omission. So either you fail to do something or you did something that immediately resulted in that fire.
So if we take the cap out, if we have, we won't charge for those, then we're not getting paid for house fires.
Correct.
Thank you.
Unless we revise the policy.
Counselor Anderson.
Yeah. I think when we originally discussed this, I spoke in favor of the cap and I'm still not sure what the cap should be, but I do think that it should be there and it should exist. And the reason being is we had talked a lot about what insurance coverage would cover. And we didn't want to exceed it by a lot. But we said those who didn't have insurance could always appeal as well. Like, there are multiple options. We're not just um, saying that there's no appeals and this is how it's going to be. There, there are multiple options to people, but and a lot of the people that I've had the opportunity to discuss this with, uh, when we get talking about it is, okay, the the taxpayers have paid for the fire departments, they've paid for all the fire department and stuff such, and they're going to pay the bill as when that response happens. And it's to what point, if there's insurance coverage, should the general taxpayer pool be reimbursed up to a certain amount for that response? It's not saying that every single cost is going to be covered. I mean, I think sitting around this table, we all know that never would we be able to factor in the cost of a fire truck, the cost of all the things that go into having that response available and bill for that, like that. I I wouldn't be able to sleep at night if we ever increased them to do a full cost recovery there. But it's just at what point is, should insurance have to kick in and reimburse the taxpayers for some of those costs incurred and? Um, so I I do think there should be a cap. I just don't know what it is yet. And I do, I am in favor of the C O having authority for appeals under a thousand dollars if if they feel comfortable with it. Um, I don't know how many are there, but.
Yes, and I think, I think uh, kind of feel the same way. I think when we, when we brought it, when this first came to the committee of the whole, and we were discussing it last time, I'd been reached out by a a few ratepayers and and uh with the twenty thousand dollar cap for non-human cause, they were, when it says non-human cause, I I don't, I don't think there was enough enough, uh, they understood what, and even some of us in council didn't understand what non-human cause was. And uh and yeah, looking at that, I think, I think when we first start start talking about it, it was around seventy five hundred to ten thousand for for a cap. And and then it got bumped to twenty and we said, okay, we'll bring it back and we'll discuss it again. And here we are. So, so I would be now with a little bit better understanding on non-human cause, uh, I think we need a cap, but I'm not, I'm not for twenty. But uh that's my, my thoughts right now. Uh, Reeve Holland.
Thank you. Are we able to uh have two separate definitions that may uh cover natural non-human cause, so lightning, um, you know, a wildfire jumps into your property, all of those things uh, versus um mechanical failures, like uh you mentioned the freezer, we'll use the freezer as an example, a wiring issue. Um, you know, I, it it's something I don't think a lot, like you mentioned, a lot of people don't think about non-human cause being that that could be part of that definition. So it's, it's almost wondering if it's more of um a way to separate the two, um, you know, when it comes to structures and, you know, if you have wiring. Now, if you have, say you have an old home, a hundred-year-old home, and it's got ancient wiring uh in it. And that, you know, where do we draw these lines? I mean, when it's not even up to code, you know, and all of those things. So there's a lot to think about, right? And um, it's difficult. But go ahead, Counselor. Yeah, sorry.
Purpose of this policy is to try and recoup some of the costs involved in fire suppression. So if everybody was to carry, it sounds like the insurance is not it's not, uh, you know, it's it's very, really quite reasonable. So if everybody purchased insurance, the the more people that purchase insurance, the cheaper it should be if 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 you get better coverage. And I think we missed the boat. We have one opportunity where we reach every ratepayer in the in the county, and that's when we send them a tax notice. If we put information like this in there about having to carry insurance and and you could be, you have the opportunity to buy your insurance and 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 be protected, or you could be liable for a huge, a huge bill. Uh, and and then let the insurance company fight over whether it's non-human or human or uh, that really shouldn't be our, our problem. If it's covered by insurance, it's covered by insurance. And uh, and if, if it's something, I mean, that's the one way that you can get to every person that is a resident or landlord in the county is with their tax notice, because everybody gets it.
Okay. Um, I don't know if there's a certain amount that we can put in a tax nos- tax notices or or uh, or not, but uh, Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you very much. I ju- I have to point out that we are changing the definition between one implement and another. And again, we are not being consistent. What we're saying is human caused, we're saying is mechanical, not human caused from one category to another. Take a step back and and have a look. We, we're not being consistent in our own, in our own documentation, our own definitions right here. And I think we need to do more work on it before we move it forward.
Thank you.
I I I can't understand why we're, we're looking at it, you know, as well, if you're, you're talking about your home here, well, it's not your fault, but if you're talking about your your piece of farm equipment that you need for for your life, it is your fault. But if it's your, your freezer, it's not your fault. But if it's your lawnmower, it's your fault. We are not being uniform across the board, period. And and yeah, I think twenty thousand dollars is far too much.
I think.
I will say again, we're we as a county have not billed for a very long time. We've had a standard of doing things. And now we're, we're worried about recuperating costs, but we're also trying to change the entire um, way we do our fire service now pay our volunteers, which I'm not against. But now we're going, you're having the worst day of your life. But now these twenty people that have come here out of the goodness of their heart to serve their community for twenty years, well, now they need to get their paycheck, so we're going to bill you. And when Bob and Joe and Jeff go out to Tom's fire and they have to look at their neighbor and go, it it's the policy, we got to bill you. Yeah, we're paid on call. Now, we get paid for being here. So thank you for paying our wage to to be out here for something we've done for you for twenty-five years out of the goodness of our heart before, because we care about our community, we care about what we do, we care, we care, we've always been here. And now it's different.
I think, uh, I think, I think we're off.
In the right place yet.
I think we're off the track there with uh.
I disagree.
Paid-on fire departments. I think what we, I do like the idea from, from the Reeve regarding natural natural caused uh fires. Um, in that wording or or however good wording it is, if a lightning strike hits, that's non-human caused. Um, if you're pulling your baler down, uh, down, down, or you're combining, because we we've seen it, and we'll probably see it this, this fall. Um, combines light up. You tell me a farmer that doesn't have uh insurance on his combine, but uh combines light up, balers light up, uh, grassmowers light up, and it's, that's a, that's a human caused situation. And uh so natural, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I don't think we're trying to recoup money because, because we have to we have to start paying people now. I I don't think that's the whole idea of this. It's just to get a, a a good bylaw here. So Counselor Wallack.
Uh, Chief Shalap, what's your, um, I guess, what's the average insurance company coverage for fire services? Do you, do you have a ballpark?
Uh, through the Chair to Counselor Wallack. So i- it it really depends on your policy. It it varies widely. Um, when we look at specifically structured fires, you know, we, most of our bills fall between five and and ten grand, and most policies that we've are like we, so I guess I'll take a step back too. We, we currently bill. We currently bill right now, and we don't have a cap. So we've run into situations where we have sent invoices that are more than. And typically, when we've seen the more than, it's been more than ten thousand dollars. Most policies are are capping at ten thousand dollars. So our hope is that if we do put a cap in, potentially it aligns more to what we've seen, which would be the ten thousand dollars or or less that we proposed initially back on May twentieth.
Okay, uh, Counselor Hall.
Thanks. Um, couple of things. If if we were to move in the direction of basically not charging, do we have any idea what the implication would be on both the fire service budget and tax rates? Like, I think, I think any decision we make needs to, we need to at least understand what the the trickle-down effect is, because there is only one taxpayer. And if we choose to, to move the burden from the individual to the, to the group, then we need to know how it affects the group. Um, I'm also not sure, and I think we would need to do some checking. I'm not sure that everybody is eligible. Every policy is eligible for the wildfire protection coverage. In some conversations with my agent, there we've we've had, um, there's been some indications that depending on how the policy is set up, you may or may not be eligible. And I've seen some policies moving more to a thousand dollar limit versus ten, although I don't personally, I don't think ten is unreasonable. And I just wanted to double check. I I think Chief Shalap, I just answered this. Um, but is it, is it correct that we actually have been billing for quite a long time already?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hall, that's correct. Um, all my predecessors billed, uh, I within the last two weeks issued a thirty-nine thousand dollar bill. Um, this is a process that we've done going back for quite a while. Um, there's been inconsistency in the administration of billing, and I think that's where we really hope to get to with this policy is actually giving us some ground rules, getting consistency, because there are times where um, billing has been conducted or it hasn't been conducted. We're making the decision to uh, reduce the bills based on the units that were required, not necessarily what was used. Uh, and these are all decisions made at the administration level where it should be in policy, stating that we will review the invoices and we will only bill for the trucks that were needed, not those that were taken. Um, so we're really trying to establish a framework that we have consistency now and going forward. But yes, we've been billing back very long time.
Okay, thank you. I I agree with some of my colleagues here that I think having some kind of charge is not an unreasonable thing. We pay, you know, our taxes generally pay for the provision of the department, but if there is a specific use, having some amount to to charge back to that is uh seems very reasonable to me, especially when all policies will have some kind of coverage.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I know we've talked a lot about examples of uh mechanical failures of farm equipment as being causes fire. But uh, as an example, if I hooked up my bumper pull trailer and drove down the highway and either the chains are dragging and spark or uh, a brake sticks and sparks or something happens, I I, we see it every summer. I'm sure that different places, you know, you get fire along the ditch here and then half a mile down the road and pretty su- soon there's five or six that they have to respond to before anybody catches it. Is that considered human cause? Is that something that we would be billing for if that person gets caught? Or is that a non-human cause? Like, just so we have an example, that's not just farm equipment, something that any one of us could do very easily.
Uh, through the Chair to Counselor Anderson. So as the policy is written, I mean, if if you chains dragging, that's a direct omission of an individual that failed to hook up their trailer correctly, it resulted in a fire. So it's the direct actions of someone that's their omission has resulted in the fire, that would be considered human caused. If the bearing on the wheel of the trailer goes, that would be a mechanical failure and non-human caused. And this is where that that fine line is between things where someone's act or failure to act results in it versus okay, something a little, a little bit more outside their control. I may have misspoke earlier about the agr- agriculture side. A bearing going would be non-human caused. We're striking a rock would be human caused.
A parade on. Reeve Holland.
Thank you. And eh, you know, and hearing that, these different um scenarios that that can really put us into a pickle, eh, for lack of better words. The natural non-human cause, I think, was the biggest concern. You know, if lightning strikes, um, why should we, uh, well, how is that our fault? But as you mentioned, um, again, I'll go back to the freezer. Um, i- in someone's home, most people do have that insurance. They do have that kind of thing. Is it difficult to add a a couple of definitions for natural, non-human caused and non-human caused? Is that, is that too?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hall, and that's actually relatively simple. And and something administration would support.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I don't know where everybody else sits as far as a cap is concerned for unnatural, non-human caused. I don't know if that's the proper wording. Um, I'd love to hear what everyone has to say on on that particular item. Uh, as you mentioned, usually ten thousand is, seems it was seventy-five hundred to ten thousand somewhere in there for was it five thousand to ten thousand? I couldn't remember the numbers you you had just kind of.
Uh, through the Chair to Counselor Holland, uh, are actually doing the analysis of what apparatus is required based on our current billing rate, which is industry average. Most of our structure fire invoices fall between, between five and ten.
Seventy-five hundred sounds like a plan, right? You know? So I'll, I'll, I'll just throw it out there for everybody else to discuss. But yeah, I I like the two definitions and it really uh clarifies a lot. And I would be, yeah, no, zero charge for anything non-human caused that's natural.
I'm a hundred percent agreement with that, and I'm sure that we started at seventy-five, but I may be wrong. Back, back when this first came, but but uh I I do like to change the definitions, and that way everybody knows what they're talking about. Um, a couple more hands up here. We got uh Counselor Hall.
Yeah, apologies for jumping in again. Just um one more clarification around the human caused. Are you uh signing then the bill to the land or to the human? So if there's somebody on your place with a quad that creates a fire, who's paying that bill? The landowner or the quad owner, which you will probably never catch? The landowner or the quad owner, which you will probably never catch.
Is that something that would be considered occupiers liability? Just curious.
Well, I'd like my question answered first. Thank you.
Through the, uh, through the Chair to Councillor Hall. So we, in the policy itself, as well as our fire service bylaw, we speak to it gives us the opportunity to build to the landowner or the individual that was caused the incident. Again, if we have OHVers trespassing on someone's property, I I I think in that case it'd be an administrative review where we would not build the landowner because again, it wasn't their own activity on their land. But that'd be part of the administrative review process we'd, we would carry out. Should we do, uh, catch the OHV people? And and we have, we've had, um, some folks that have result caused a wildland event and they came back to fast up to it, then we'd be pursuing the the recovery from the individuals.
Thank you.
Oh, once more, uh, Councillor Cromwell.
Well, I would like to thank the chief for, uh, you know, kind of refixing or or re-explaining that definition and I I'm much more content knowing that what is mechanical for one is considered mechanical for another. And I think that makes it a lot more fair. I would agree. I would love to see, uh, some examples put out there with, uh, you know, this to that. And and I think seventy five hundred would be a lot more fair um, for what is actually human caused as opposed to mechanical and out of one's control. Very simple little changes and and fixes can actually make a big difference. And I'm far more inclined to support it, uh, with these changes being put forward.
Okay, so I think we got a, I think we have a consensus there to look at seventy, seventy five hundred for, for non-human caused. And a definition of non-human and natural, right? Natural, non-human. We good with that? Everybody?
So, so it would be definitions for human caused, non-human caused and natural, non-human caused. So the non-human caused, you know, um, being unnatural, non-human caused. I guess it's it's just to make sure we have those three specified.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I got, I got the knot. So from administration. So so I think, uh, so I think what we can do, so how we want to do this. Direct administration to forward fire response cost recovery policy to county council is presented, not that to to bring back the, uh, uh, fire response recovery policy to the next county council meeting with the amended, uh, revisions. Would that work?
And I'd be happy to make that.
That would work, as discussed. Okay, we so to to bring back the for administration to bring back the fire response recovery policy to county council, uh, next county council meeting. With the discussed revisions. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So that's, uh, six and two. Oh, three were opposed? Oh. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. So that would be five and, five and three, right? Yeah, five and three. So it's moving forward. Okay. Policy, six point four, policy sixty two seventy five donations, page ninety seven of your agenda. You're getting there. So on this one is, uh, we will get a discussion regarding the donations policies with with, uh, with administration.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the committee. Uh, previously in May, you asked that administration bring back recommendations with respect to your policy, um, which is called donations currently. Um, and under that policy, the CAO is authorized to issue, uh, basically promotional items up to a hundred dollars. And then is required to report back to council each and every time. So we have looked at the policy in in comparison to what other municipalities, uh, have. And of course, there's a whole gamut of options. So this is just a starting point. Um, our recommend, our mech, pardon me, our recommendation is to go with a county promotional items policy. Um, and then currently, and again, just for discussion, it's broken out into two kind of types of uses. One would be requests for the public where the CAO could authorize up to five hundred dollars. Uh, there are some guidelines that are set out on what that kind of would look like, and then do a informal reporting to council on a quarterly basis, uh, just via email. And that keeps council informed as to, you know, where are the promotional items going and what are the activities that are happening in the community? Although you probably already know that anyways. Um, and then the second set of promotional items would be for public and intergovernmental affairs. And so this is where they're, um, we're proposing for consideration is maybe each council member would like a small budget of promotional items that you could use at your discretion and it would be subject to budget approval. As well, the CAO and senior leadership team would have, uh, of course, a budget for when they go to conferences or or or, uh, meeting with delegates from, for whatever reason, and that they could use that promotional items and then there would be no reporting required. Um, and then just the last thing I want to mention is the guidelines, and I think the the principles of the policy kind of really speak to what we're trying to achieve. Is that first and foremost, promotional items are meant to be given away. Um, they definitely raise the profile of the municipality, but they are also subject to budget approvals. Um, but also that promotional items should not be administratively onerous and that they are independent from any other grants or uh, support that the municipality would be giving to community groups. Um, and just in from a comparison, I, again, I looked at other policies from other municipalities, they are quite different. In terms of what other municipalities that do have a budget for elected officials, um, one, for example, has three seventy five for council members and then uh, five hundred for the Reeve or mayor, I couldn't recall which one that was. Um, the, another one has seven, seven hundred and fifty and then, uh, fifteen hundred for the Reeve. And then another one has, you know, they have it in their policy that council would have a budget, but it is determined at budget time. So it varies, as I said. Um, in terms of the CAO authority, some are, you know, two hundred dollars, others are five hundred dollars and others really have no limit. And many of them don't require any reporting from the administration when promotional items are distributed. Uh, but it was left in here because that's something that council, um, is currently doing. But again, you could change that if you like. I'm happy to answer any questions and of course, take direction on the framework.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Um. Councillor Hall.
If we want to move away from operations and increased focus on government governance, I think this is a really good start. The, uh, the current policy is, in my view, a complete waste of CAO time. And we need to, we need to free up space so that our, uh, most, uh, our leader has time to focus on the things that are highest priority. So I'd be happy to move the recommended motion when the time comes, or now.
Okay. Anybody else got any discussion on this? Reeve Holland.
Thank you so much. I really like your, your policy that you've brought forward here today and and, um, I I appreciate the effort and the thoughts that are going into it. And, uh, I agree, it it is, um, the current, um, policy is is, um, yeah, not, not really. Um, it's not really great. Um, so, um, with that though, the only thing that I did notice is that uh, the reporting to council is via email. The only thing that I think about there is that the public doesn't get to see that we're in the support. So I, that would be my, my only change is instead of email, maybe going into the information portion of our agenda so that the public have an opportunity to see that that we're, um, as supportive as well. Um, and then I just noticed, um, the email that, um, I think that was, yeah, that was about it. Um, other than that, well done. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm just gonna chime in here quick too. I I also agree with that, um, to put it into quarterly into the agenda, whether it's a council agenda or a committee of the whole, um. The same sort of reporting as you would have done in an email. Doesn't have to have a huge, huge amount of bells and whistles. We, we donated, uh, uh, the CEO donated uh, fifty pens to or or whatever to this organization. It doesn't need a letter and everything stating what what it's all for, but, um, the only other thing that I'm not really up on is a, is another, another agenda I or budget item of for elected officials and and, uh, and and the Reeve and that. I think if 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 the Reeve or an elected official wants to take, uh, grab some grab some, uh, pins and stuff like that, I think they I don't see anything wrong with asking, you know, you got fifty pens that I can maybe grab it and, uh, and and give out at this organization is when you put it in a budget, you got to actually track it. And that's, that's just another, that's just another thing we have to track. And there's, there's, you know, I'm gonna say it here. We're, we're not a hundred percent on tracking. Especially on the, on the, on the, uh, councillors' ends and stuff like that. So I would, I would stay away from that. I like the idea of bumping it to like five hundred dollars for the CAO. I got no problem with that, but but, uh, to give a budget item for council, no, I'm not, I'm not for that. That's my point of view. Uh. Councillor Cromwell.
On one of those, uh, fantastic days where I agree with the councillor Hall, I think, I I think it's a great policy. I like it. I like the idea of elected official being able to have, uh, you know, stuff for for those events and I I think I agree also with the Reeve Holland. It's very simple to put that, uh, as a note in, you know, your monthly or quarterly report in Cow to to make it transparent. And I don't think I was asking too much of anyone at our room to go, hey, if you give out, uh, twenty pens, you know, put it as a footnote in your report if we can't uh, handle a little bit of of check and balance on a minor item like that, then I think we have bigger issue. So I, uh, I fully support what councillor Holland put up there in the amendment by Reeve Holland.
Mr. Jameson.
Uh, you know, um, I'm a hundred percent in support for the, uh, increase for the CAO. But I kind of tend to agree with you, uh, Mr. Minza, when it comes down to, um, having our budget, some of our areas really don't have a lot of influx with community events, those types of things. You know, five hundred dollars might be completely acceptable for the whole term. Some people that could be done in the first year, first quarter, whatever, with promotional items, depending on the events of that area. And of course, they could always ask the CAO as well. I personally am not too much of in favor of having to um, it's not so much the tracking. It's public tax dollars, it's easy. And then this way it's all on one report and there's never any confusion. That's the way I see it.
Okay, councillor Anderson.
I personally am in favor of the cap. CAOs like this limit for the CAO, but also that each elected official can hand out different items when they're going places like hear about, you know, going to Buffalo Lake or going to different colleges. And if you had, you know, a couple of pens in your pocket, you hand out to somebody when you're meeting them, I think it just makes a good impression. And, uh, I do worry about the actual tracking of it though. Um, I just think it would become so onerously and kind of be a micromanaging more so than anything. And so I'm not really in favor of a strict limit for that purpose because I just think it would, then, then you're putting some member of administration in a position that they have to tell you. You know, councillor Minz, maybe you're over your five hundred dollar limit, you can't have two more pens. Like, I don't want them to have to do that. I don't want to put them in that position. So for that reason, I I'm not really in favor of the cap on that. I I don't think that we should be putting administration in that position. If we say, okay, it's okay for councillors to be handing out promotional items, then it should be okay for councillors to be handing out promotional items and you shouldn't be putting administration in a position where they have to track it or micromanage you to say, no, you can't have those two more pens. Just don't think that's reasonable.
Perfect. Reeve Holland.
Thanks. And and while I understand exactly what everyone is saying with regards to having to have a budget, um, we also run into the situation where, where does it end? Um, you know, and if we don't have, um, it puts administration also into a situation where one councillor might only ask for fifty bucks one year and one ask is asking for fifteen hundred. So, you know, it, that's where I, I don't think it's fair as well, that administration is, is, uh, you know, it's taxpayers' dollars. We are accountable for them. Uh, whether we track them is extremely important to me, uh, but we are accountable for those, for those, uh, tax dollars. If there's a budget, um, that's there, we're aware of it, we know what it is. Um, we know what that package of promotional items would look like. And you, you do so accordingly. If you, um, you know, just because we may not have, some areas might not have massive uh, events, they still, we still attend them, we still go out to them. Um, and we're still doing that, that, that work and and being there. Um, so for me, if you do need in excess of a budget, it's, it's a, it's a, a quick, hey, is this okay? Um, and so for me, it's accountability and, uh, I I personally like the, uh, the fact that there would be a budget.
Okay. Anybody else wanna chime in on various policy? No? Okay, so where do we stand here? Is there somebody willing to make a recommendation? Actually, yeah, yeah, actually councillor Hall made the recommendation. Are you still standing by your recommendation, councillor Hall?
The motion is on the floor.
Okay, the recommendation that the received, uh, received policy is sixty two seventy five to be forwarded to council is presented.
Reeve Holland. I'll, I'll put an amendment in there, um, just to change and and maybe it might be a friendly amendment, but just to change from the email to, uh, to, uh, a quarterly, um, agenda item.
No obje, no objection, I have no objections to that, if the rest of the council is fine with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's a friendly amendment. To, uh, to change the wording of of the, uh, reporting to council, not via email, but by, by, uh, quarterly agenda item. And that, uh, do you want to do it at the committee of the whole or committee of the whole? It could even be done through, uh, through the, um, CAO's report, something like that, I guess. So everybody understand the motion with friendly amendment or?
That revised policy sixty two seventy five before to council as amended, as discussed? Or as discussed, as amended?
Yeah, you betcha. I think that'll work, right? That'll work. Okay. On that motion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councillor Cromwell, I never heard an aye or an e or.
Aye.
Okay, so that's, uh, seven and one. So that motion was moved. So that completes six point zero, um, do we need to have a ten minute break before we go to to the next, uh, agenda item? Yeah, okay, let's take about a ten minute break. We'll come back at, uh, about two minutes to, two minutes to two, one, one, one fifty eight. Yeah, okay, let's take about a ten minute break. We'll come back at, uh, about two minutes to, two minutes to two, one, one, one fifty-eight. So we'll move on to new business. Seven in the agenda, seven point one draft fire services recognition policy, page one oh two, the agenda. And I'm not, uh. Mister Travis Alibi again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is, uh, again, another, a little more exciting policy for us coming from the fire service side of the house. Um, as we've been moving through, working on the fire service review, working on the membership policy, paper call, and all the other things that we've been working on. Um, one piece, and this is kind of the final piece, uh, that was missed, was, was a formal recognition policy for our membership. Uh, this is something that's pretty standard with most municipalities, um, it generally follows their own municipal recognition policy. So what we've done here is we've put together our own fire services recognition policy that, uh. Aligns with our neighbors and our own policy forty-four hundred, uh, recognition. To, uh, provide for long-term service recognition for our members. Uh, it also has one other, uh, element to it, and that's section four, which is the, uh. A team building fund. So, uh, two, two pieces of that. Number one, uh, we currently have a. Grants to fire departments, which is not really a grant, but it's just an annual five hundred dollar payment we make annually. Um, which really doesn't provide any definition of what it's for. As well, we, uh, with the, with the paper call rollout happening, we've stopped paying fire clubs. So. The twenty-five hundred dollar team building fund allows respective fire districts to still have the team building exercises, the annual barbecues. Um, where they can have camaraderie and, and do that, that, that team aspect as well. So really, we've, we've captured two things in the recognition policy. One is long-term service. As well as ensuring that we still have a provision there for team building. And unfortunately, like my first presentation, there is a numbering error in this policy. Uh, we repeated number, uh, we repeated three point two and we missed three point five. So we're gonna have to shuffle a couple of numbers down again here as well. But, uh, that's our recognition policy in a nutshell.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion? Counselor Chamsik.
Um, I would like to, uh, move over the recommended.
Microphone, please.
I would like the recommended, um, recommended to council amended changes, please. Uh, great job. I really liked the team building aspect. That's really important for morale and all those great things. Really well written.
Perfect. Anybody else wanna? Discussion? Reeve Holland.
Sure, um, I echo, uh, the, the sentiments. This is excellent. Um, recognition is so incredibly important. And, uh, I really appreciate you bringing forward, um, this to us so that, uh, that can go, uh, forward in such a great way. Um, and I'll still put a plug out there for, we need to do a pancake breakfast.
Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you, uh, I love it. I was gonna move the recommended there myself, uh, well done. About time we're, we're really getting on this. And thank you chief for getting it done.
Okay, well. Any other discussion that, uh. Needs to be put forward? Seeing none. The, uh, Counselor Chamsik has moved that council forward the, uh, fire services recognition policy for. To a regular county council meeting. For approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Eight, no. Perfect, thank you very much. Seven point two. Uh, page one oh eight of your agenda golf cart bylaw request. So this was put in by administration, so Mister Beck.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, we've attached the request, uh, was submitted by a resident. Um. Uh, to get into this, uh, pilot project. It's an awful lot of work and, um, some places are. Uh, are in the business of it right now and some are having a bit of a hard time with it. It's not. Loved by every municipality that's being attempted in. So, um, we're suggesting that council. Uh, receive the request and refer to the next council to see where it sits on their priority list. And if it's deemed a high priority by the next council, then we would move forward with it.
Okay, um, I totally agree with that. Uh, there is already a. Uh, there's some, uh, pilot programs in, in Alberta right now, one actually in our, in our county region with, uh. With Whispering Hills, uh, Summer Village of Whispering Hills. Uh, I know they got one going on, I think it says in there, Barhead and stuff like that. And, and I don't, uh, myself, I don't. I know with Whispering Hills, they were only charging five dollars to register your, your, uh, golf cart and. Um, they would have to take all the information and, uh, mark it down. And then the government wants all the information. So it's taken, taken time and. And energy to, to do this. And they're actually getting pushed back in there because some people still don't wanna register their. Golf carts and stuff like that. So. I feel the same way. We have pilot projects going on out there right now, uh. Why do we wanna create one for ourselves to, to bring on more work until we see how these other municipalities actually? Uh. Administer and, 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 and maintain, maintain this, these projects. So. That's my point of view. So I agree with the administration on, on that. Uh, anybody else wanna discuss? Counselor Anderson.
I agree completely. Um, at first glance, it sounded like a great idea to do a pilot project. And then reading about the incredible administrative, um, undertaking that it would be. Uh, really put a halt to that. Thought really quickly, um. And maybe one day it'll be something that, you know, in targeted areas of the county. A future council wants to roll out, but I just don't think that it's something that we could undertake at this point. Like, I don't think we have the capacity.
Perfect. Mr. Chairman, just one other thing, um. We get a couple of complaints a year from one or two subdivisions of that, but it's really. Pretty rare, um, so we know it occurs within some of the country residential areas. Uh, by and large, it's not a problem. So I, sometimes we try to fix things that aren't really a problem. It's really. Not much of a problem. And we do still respond to the odd complaint where there's some rowdiness, um, but by and large, it's not a problem.
That's good, that's good to hear. Counselor Gerlach.
If others are doing a pilot project, why don't we just wait and see what the results of their pilot project is, as opposed to getting involved in it? And I guess the problem that happened at Mystic Men is they have one golf cart. And the one golf cart was driving down the road in C P O, trying to give him a ticket for it. So that's why they pressed. So.
You're not supposed to do it. Um, anybody else wanna discuss?
I'm making motions except for information.
Counselor Wallach, it's, uh, Counselor Wallach has just made a motion to accept for information and. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in fa- oh.
Can we change the word accept to receive just because accept means to adopt?
Okay, so receive for information, is that okay? Um, okay, receive for information. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Eight, eight, no. Uh, next one, uh, R M A district update. I think everybody had, uh. Had a chance. Had the chance to look at this and read it and R M A is doing some, some, some great things. They're very busy. Looks good, uh. I think we can just, uh. Except that.
Move to accept for information.
Move to. Yeah, yeah, do we, do we need to really? Uh, we can just, we can just, it's information and. Counselor Wallach has, uh, made a motion to go into closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. We are in close. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. At two thirty. Two or one or whatever.